This meeting of the Margate Planning Board is called to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
Flag allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tom Collins. Clem Wazleski. Rich Patterson.
Here.
Mike Cristaldi.
Here.
Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Margaret Guber Nolte.
Here.
Craig Pomisano.
Here.
Despina Hess.
Here.
Remy Pelosi. Joe DiGiorolamo. Ron Gruppo.
Here.
Mike Richmond.
Mike Richmond.
Mike Richmond?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of the same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Like to hear a motion for the approval of decisions and resolutions, number five, 2019, MBNNILLC; number six, 2019, election of chairperson and vice-chairperson; number seven, 2019, appointment of staff and solicitor; number eight, 2019, Talib Christopher Hallaway; number nine, 2019, Raymond O'Connor.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Jim and Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. First case is PMG. This is a continuance. PMG Real Estate Developers LLC, 117 North Gladstone Avenue, Block 307.02, Lot 43, in the S-25 District, to grant a subdivision variance, lot width, and possibly others. Taxes and order are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren, would be sworn in, please.
May I ask?
Yes.
Solicitor, the only people that can vote on this are the people that were present at the last meeting?
Correct. So it's my understanding, or if you certify that you listened to the tape, and I, it's my understanding that Ms. Guber Nolte, I know she wasn't here last time, but she hasn't listened to the tape, therefore, she cannot participate. Everyone else, I believe, was here last time? Is that correct? So Ms. Guber Nolte's stepping down. This is a continuance.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to swear, Mr. McLaren. Mr. McLaren, do you swear affirming testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Board Chairman, Board Members, my report stands as read into the last month. No new plans have been submitted?
No new plans have been submitted? Yeah, you were supposed to keep them from last month.
That, you can share, and it's up there.
So I defer to the applicant to continue his testimony. Before we do that, the board would like to congratulate Mr. Goldstein on becoming a named partner in his firm. He's been the rainmaker and carried that firm on his back for 20 years now.
Thank you, thank you. Means I got to spend more nights out at my pleasure, but thank you. Ready to proceed?
Yes.
So last month, we went through a fair discussion on the impact of the neighborhood that the construction of two new modestly designed, single-family houses would have if this lot in question were cut in half to create two 35-feet-wide lots instead of two 40-foot-wide lots. Testimony was fairly clear-
Instead of 170-foot lot.
Instead of 170, I'm sorry. Testimony was clear that this is an isolated lot. We're calling it a 70 and a C of 35s. But we went through a lot of discussion as to what could be built in the event we went by right, no variances. In order to provide the board with the information as to the either-or, the applicant further engaged Terry Cummings, architect, to prepare the plans that all of you have in front of you. This is the by-right house that is the alternative to the two modest, single-family variance homes. Now, just so long as everyone understands, we discussed building those two homes with a deed restriction on the property, that if the homes were approved as-is, no bulk variances would ever be requested in the future for those existing homes. So in theory, we'd have two 35-foot-wide lots. Each of those lots would not be able to be enlarged with regard to, I mean, the homes on the lots would not be able to be enlarged at any time. I mean, at some point, they might be demolished, and then new by-right homes would be built. But the applicant went so far as to keep the character of the neighborhood smaller instead of bigger. But as we got towards the end of the meeting, the board said, "We would like to see what the alternative would look like," rather than just vote on, we talked about taking out some space in the roof, or taking out a little additional room in the back. So what you have in front of you now is the by-right house. What's on the board here are the two variance properties, which are clearly, in our opinion, and we believe we've established the fact that these two homes fit better into the neighborhood. But more importantly, the lots themselves, and we really didn't discuss this enough. Eric, please use the microphone.
Eric, before you continue.
Yes.
I was the one who wanted revised plans, okay? The revised plans were to modify the two existing houses. Let's keep this simple, it's a continuance. Are we voting on this single-family house or those? Because if we're voting on those, then this has no value to me.
We are voting on those.
So none of the board, we don't need this, because we're not voting on this.
Correct. It's just to show what could be built.
Well, but it's not what we're voting on.
Correct.
We're voting on what we're seeing.
That's right.
Okay. So, huh? So let's go with what we're seeing and-
So, I don't necessarily disagree, Mr. Collins. We're not voting on that.
Right, so why waste our time on that? Let's go with what's there, and let's do your present, finish your presentation.
What's there?
And did you change this, like you had said last meeting you were going to do?
The applicant decided that-
Just yes or no?
No.
Did you change it?
No.
No. So we're voting on it, same as it was last year?
Correct.
Fine, that's it.
Oh wait, I don't understand the yes or no answer. Did they make it four bedrooms and lower the roof and all that stuff?
No.
Or they're going to go back to what it was? I'm asking him.
I'm sorry.
No.
I asked.
So you're going back to the original, those original plans, you're going back to?
Correct.
And then you're telling us this is the alternative, and this would require no, I like to know, this would require no variances?
That's right.
Okay.
I'm going to, looked like I had an A1 prior, so I'll call this A2, potential design.
Right, we can just call them, it's Terry Cummings' plan from February 16th.
Okay. Cummings' Plan, Feb. 16th.
So again, I'm thick here. So there is no redrawn plans, because we're not redrawing. It's that?
Correct.
Got it.
We're voting on the lot size more than the house itself.
Okay.
The lot sizes, as we know, are greatly in excess in lot area of what's required on this block. We're short on frontage only, and Mr. Chu is here if we have further questions regarding the planning testimony, but I think we've vetted that out fairly well at the last meeting. So the purpose of the plan, even though it may or may not be relevant, is just to show what the design alternative would be in the event that the variance is not granted.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question for you then. If this is a continuance, or maybe Leo, then we already did the public portion, there's no change in the plan, so at this point, he's just doing his summary, and then we're voting?
Yeah, and I'll leave it up to the chairman's discretion. If there was, if there's people here tonight who weren't here last time, and they have something to say, I'll leave it to the chairman's discretion, we'll try and keep it brief.
This board has always bent to the side of, if someone has something to say, we'll
We don't have any more planning testimony.
Okay.
So the designs are as submitted, what they were-
Right, and we've gone over them, and everyone's seen them, so-
Over them alive.
If that's the case, then I think at this point, unless the board has something, I would like to open up if anyone different from the public that didn't speak last time would come up, state their name, and be sworn in.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Michael Ficetti for Lauren Kane. I was here last time at the meeting.
Right.
However, my client did not have the opportunity to be here herself. She is here this evening. I would just ask for a little bit of leniency, just to allow her-
Yes.
-the opportunity to present. I may add just a minor issue.
That's fine.
But if we can begin, and I appreciate the board's indul-
Let's have her sworn in first.
And Ms. Kane, I think we probably have her address from the previous time. So do you swear affirming testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Could you tell us where you live in relationship to the house?
I live right next door at 115 North Gladstone Avenue.
Bayside or Oceanside?
I guess it's Oceanside.
Okay.
Ms. Kane, can you describe for the board how long that property's been in your family?
Over 64 years.
Okay. And can you describe for the board generally what your, just what your experience of that property has been?
My experience of that property has been, it's a very quaint neighborhood. Everybody knows everybody. The homes are basically one- and two-story homes. Now, there has been a problem consistently since I've grown up in that home, there's been a problem with flooding. The streets flood all the time. Also, there are schools on both sides of the home, of the street, less than a block away. This is the Gladstone Avenue block between Winchester and Monmouth. Right around to the right of the corner on Monmouth is Eugene Thai School. And that presents a problem, because people from the school park on our street, and we cannot park there. There are often times where I have to park three blocks away, and my husband and I only have one car, and to have, own this house for over 60-something years and not be able to park without having the problem of putting two homes on the property, on that property, is an issue. There's also a school, I believe it's the William Ross School, on the other side of Monmouth Avenue. That's between Winchester and Monmouth on Granville Avenue. So there are two schools, and it's not just during the school year where there's a problem. We use this house all the time, it's not just a summer house. I basically grew up half the year in this home when I was little. We were down here almost every weekend, this is our little retreat, we're here all the time. And the problem is, in the summer especially, not just with the school, but with both schools, they have activities, they have plays, they have shows. People from Beach Dock, we're four or five blocks from the beach, they park on our street. We're one block up from Castles, which is on Ventnor Avenue, people park on our street. There's already a parking problem. In fact, the prior owner of the property, Ruth Kaufman, who, I don't know if she's deceased or a nursing home, because there was such a parking problem, she had to have, and I'm sure if you look at the records, have a handicapped spot put on the street so that she could park there, because she was not able to park there. This is, the parking issue has been a problem at least for 10, 15 years. And to put two homes where there was one home is going to present an even greater problem. The other thing is, our house does not have a driveway. We have no choice but to park on the street. We're directly affected, we're the house next door. And I will tell you, on our street, and I know there's some other neighbors who are also here to testify tonight, most of the people on our street don't use their driveways. Of the homes that have driveways, they don't use their driveways. There's no requirement that they have to use their driveways. So there's a major problem with parking, there's a major problem with flooding. The quarter, the quarter of Winchester floods, and it comes up our street all the time. To add two homes to a street which already has drainage problems and problems with the water table, I'm not an expert, but I can see in the summer, especially when it rains, the street is flooded. There's problem with, there's a problem with traffic. That's, that's an issue as well. There are other issues that, as I said, the character, the whole point of Margate, from what I understand, is to mainly, I mean, not that I'm against development, but you don't want to destroy the quaintness and the character of the neighborhood. The homes on the street are no more than two stories, most of them are one-story. Front, next street, the homes behind the subject property are one-story. My home, which is 115, as well as 117, are little bungalows. In fact, when my parents bought the, bought the home, there were only three homes on the street. Our home, the subject property, and I believe the property on the other side, which is 119. And that is also one-story. I've taken a number of photos, which I think my counsel may want to circulate. The character of this neighborhood has been consistent for the past 60-something years. It's been consistent.
If this board, we all visited the property and the neighborhood, and we're all familiar, if it's just going to show us the neighborhood?
That's fine, yeah.
I don't think it, we need to do that.
Okay, all right. And while I recognize, you know, modernity and the right to build on an existing lot, the proposal to subdivide and erect two monstrosities in the middle of the block yet is going to, aside from exacerbate the parking problem, the flooding problem, the traffic problem, it's going to destroy the whole character of the neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's going to look horrendous, a monstrosity, whether it's two or one, with the two little homes on each side, it's going to dwarf all the other homes. I understand-
And I just want to comment something.
Okay.
After Sandy, it's unavoidable. Everything has to start up here. Whether it's one home or two homes, you're never going to see little bungalows like that again.
I understand, and I, and I, I don't have an issue, I know we'll have to address if there's one home on the property later on, I don't have an issue with one home being on the property.
Right.
But two homes, four stories, is, is a monstrosity, and there are other objections to it. And as far as the parking, from what I propose, from what I've seen as the proposal, the parking situation's going to be horrendous, traffic horrendous, flooding horrendous. I know the ordinance requires a minimum lot, a lot width of 40 feet. You want me to say anything else?
That's right, yeah, that's right. So we're in good shape there.
Okay.
So, just to summarize Mrs. Kane's position, you know, excuse me, Ms. Kane's position.
I beg.
You know, it's pretty evident from the testimony that was provided today, as well as the testimony that was previously provided and supplemented this evening, the character of the neighborhood encompassing North Gladstone, North Front Neck, Winchester, and Monmouth have remained consistent for many years. Despite that consistency, it's also recognized that the township of Margate has continued to face the greatest issues, parking, traffic, and flooding. I'm aware that in 2016, the City of Margate adopted or reviewed the 2016 Comprehensive Master Plan update, and that was ultimately adopted at a resolution in 2017. In that master plan review and update, a number of things were acknowledged. First, Margate is in a period of transition. We're all aware of that. Margate has gone from what was more, close to 10,000 residents, we're being reduced down to 65, 6,000 permanent residents, and, you know, Margate services are being stressed. Parking and traffic are major issues. And although there is a trend towards larger homes by second homeowners, which is acknowledged immediately-
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
I can hear you, but it's for the record.
Yes. Understood, yes. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the 2016 Comprehensive Master Plan update, it was acknowledged that while there are, is a trend towards larger homes by second homeowners, one of the objectives of the master plan was to continue to plan and zone to preserve the character and appeal of the existing neighborhoods. Schedule B1 setting forth, Margate, the City of Margate Schedule Standards was specifically not changed in that comprehensive update. Prior testimony from the applicant's expert indicated there are 22 lots on this, in this general area. Eleven of those properties have a width that's equal to or greater than 40, 40 feet, the required what lot width. Half of them do not. This board has the authority to grant bulk variances when and where facts and circumstances justify a variance. In this instance, we do not believe that those facts or circumstances are present. First, under a C1 or hardship variance, the issue is if all properties in the area are subject to the same conditions as the lot in question, then the appropriate remedy is to change it by ordinance, not by zoning, excuse me, by variance. Excuse me. In addition, in this instance, we truly believe that the hardship at issue was self-created. As indicated by Mr. Goldstein, it is their position that a by-right home can be built on the property without subdividing. The only reason that we are here before the board this evening is because they are seeking to divide the lot, which is compliant with the ordinance, into two lots that are not compliant. In addition, we also believe that a C2 or a detriment versus benefits variance is not also permissible, because again, we do not believe that the benefits, or any benefit, will be resulted as, based on the application, and that only a detriment will occur to the surrounding community. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Can you hold that till the things are done, Eric? State your name, and then be sworn in, please.
I'm Robin Schwartz.
And your address, please.
114 North Gladstone, right across the street.
Do you swear affirming testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, we've lived at 114 since 1991, which is 28 years. We actually plan on retiring here, and we're down here almost every weekend and holiday right now. I apologize in advance some of the comments you've heard before, but if I can. So the first issue is traffic and parking. As already stated, we are a through-street for castles. We're also a through, a through-street for people going to the beach. We also get significant through-traffic and parking issues from the Performing Arts Center, which is a year-round issue. We also have parents parking right in our area, picking up their children from both schools, which are on each side of us. As far as some of the comments that were said at the previous meeting, we were unable to attend, but I listened to the entire audio. It's unlikely that the price point of the homes, if they put up two homes, would be affordable to a young family. Therefore, it's probably more likely that a mature family could afford it, and therefore more likely that it will be occupied by more drivers. The proposed two homes will have six off-street parking combined. For those of us that live in Margate, we are aware that most people will park one car in the driveway and the rest of the cars on the street. During the summer, two homes with five bedrooms will probably add three to four cars per home to the area. We will lose off-street parking due to the two driveways and add six to eight cars every weekend. Additionally, this street is quite narrow, it's not like Frontenac. It is unbelievably challenging to park in one's driveway and hope to get out when all of the cars that are parked on the street go right to the curb cut. The issue of one home versus two homes. Our ordinances exist to prevent excessive density in the community. The construction of one home is appropriate for the size of the lot and the neighborhood. Just because it is an oversized lot doesn't, doesn't mean that has to be developed to the setback. I disagree that it represents a better planning opportunity. An appropriately-sized, single-family home with a driveway, a pool, and a yard, I think would be a great addition to our community. The suggestion, which was stated in the previous meeting from the audio, that a 10-bedroom home would be, a 10-bedroom home was suggested, and my response is that that would be inappropriate just because it theoretically could fit in that size lot. It wouldn't be appropriate for the neighborhood either in price point or aesthetics. So if you refer to the properties on our specific block at 100 North Gladstone and 109 North Gladstone, those are both oversized lots. I believe one of them is a double lot, and the other, it looks like it's one and a half, I certainly didn't measure. Both of those are single-family homes, and they look really nice in our neighborhood, and it fits in, and I just feel that two homes on this property looks, will look like they've been squeezed in. They have, they also have beautiful green space, and I feel they enhance our community. So I don't agree that two homes will allow for better light, air, and open space, as was stated. When we rebuilt our home several years ago, we took all of this into consideration. Our new home is actually three feet narrower than our previous home. We also were told by this very planning board that we actually could extend our home an additional six feet in depth. We chose not to do that. We chose instead to have more green space and fit in better with our neighborhood. So I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to express my opinion and concern.
Thank you. All right. Please come up, state your name, and be sworn in.
Josh Schwartz, 114 North Gladstone.
And you swear affirming testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just going to be simplistic with parking, and it's been hammered in, but in our home that we built, on every weekend, I have a minimum of four cars. My neighbor to my left has a minimum of four cars, and another driver coming up is going to be of age. It's a, it's dense parking now. If you put two homes there, just think about it rationally, it's going to be five to eight cars. I ask yourself, there's three things that this change could be if you approved two homes. It could make parking better, worse, or the same. Only three things. Having two homes with the capability, if it's like me, having more, eight cars in that dense area, I ask yourself, does it make parking better, worse, or the same? We all know the answer. Be worse. And I don't think anybody wants to approve something that would make a quality-of-life issue, parking, worse. I wouldn't, and I live there. I don't think any one of you would want that in your neighborhood either. A single home, do whatever they want, in my mind, it's their right to. Two homes, not for my money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public portion's closed. Mr. Goldstein, if you had some response.
Yes. Ma'am, what size lot do you live on?
Let's, can you come up, ma'am? He's entitled to cross-examine you.
How big is your lot?
It's a single-family lot.
35 feet wide, correct?
Whatever the single-family lot is.
She lives in a 35-foot-wide lot. Sir, would you come up, please?
Would you be nice?
I will. I'm going to ask you a question.
How can I resent it?
Okay, well, you can resent it all you like. What size lot do you live on?
Eric, be more cordial.
What size lot do you live on?
I own the property, it's 35 feet.
Thank you. So what we have is objectors who have their 35-foot-wide lot, who don't want other people to have it, and don't want change to occur. Respectfully, every single street in Margate is a through-street to somewhere. There is no parking presently in front of the subject property. We're proposing eight off-street parking spaces, four per house, where none currently exist. So parking will certainly be alleviated to, on the order of magnitude, than what's there now. She doesn't have parking off-street. It's all on-street. We're creating a significant number of off-street spaces. So to say parking is a problem and traffic is a problem, I would ask you, where is parking not a problem in Margate? Everywhere is a problem. It's a problem on Ventnor Avenue, it's a problem on Atlantic Avenue, it's a problem on the beach block, it's a problem in front of Amherst Avenue. We have a parking problem that ain't going away whether or not this two is changed to a one, or the one becomes a, whatever it's going to be, there's going to be a parking problem in Margate. And I'm sure Mr. McLaren would probably add, we're underparked as a city, correct?
Correct.
So when you talk about parking being a problem, I believe it's a little bit disingenuous. You just don't want this house to get built with the property to be subdivided-
May I cross-examine the witness?
No, I, Eric, I don't like that line of question.
I would just, I would just add that when it was pointed out last time at the meeting, and I'm just responding-
I don't, I don't want the people acute, I don't want the people to be abused that come up and comment and say, they're not saying what they mean to say. They said it on the oath, and I'm taking them at their word for it.
And I think clearly what was asked last night, I think it was Ms., it was this Ms. Hess, indicated when it was not clear from the record, and it was indicated by the representative, who's not here, that it was 10 bedrooms, you know, it was, and the fact of the matter
the fact of the matter is that they were taking away two curb spots, and they were replacing that with three. It was only a net gain of one. So there really isn't, I'm not gonna get into casting aspersions and talking about disingenuous, just being disingenuous. I think that can all be left aside. The fact of the matter is, my client's position, Mr. Schwartz's position, his wife's position, I think, has been clearly stated. The issues of the parking, they reside on Gladstone. And as I stated before, the only person who's benefiting from this is the, is the applicant.
Better, worse, or the same?
So Eric, you're not seeking any parking variance, correct?
No, of course not.
For either house?
Neither house needed a parking variance. The single house wouldn't need a parking variance. Parking's tough in the entire city. Traffic's tough in the entire city. Flooding is tough in the entire city. They presented no evidence that this is gonna create additional flooding, 'cause the house there now is about 100% impervious coverage. So what's gonna be replacing that house, whether it's a single or two homes, is greatly going to increase the drainage. So to say that drainage will be worse by the construction of two homes that meet your lot coverage is incorrect. Right now, we've got concrete everywhere, which will be replaced with landscaping, et cetera. Look, the neighbors don't want the house. I'd rather them come up and say, we don't want the house.
Board members, please pay attention and stop your talking.
We don't have much more to say.
I was talking to the board.
Look, the neighbors don't want it for various reasons. I'm not gonna say they're true or not true. They don't want these two homes being built. They've all decided among themselves, one house would be better, okay? The two neighbors that don't like the 35-foot-wide lots live on 35-foot-wide lots. Their reason is, they don't like the change to Margate. Dinosaurs didn't like the change either. They're not around anymore. So we're talking about a change that's necessary due to Hurricane Sandy, due to the population changing in town, due to builders coming and buying properties. It's very difficult to say, we're gonna leave everything like it used to be. But that seems to be their argument. So unless the board has any further questions, we really don't have any more evidence. You've vetted this out well. It's just a matter of whether or not these two lots, and again, let's not lose sight of what we're talking about, oversized lots by way of square footage, undersized by way of frontage, okay? We believe, based on the testimony at the last meeting, based upon our professional planner's testimony, that we've established the criteria for the variance. The neighbors don't want two homes. What are we gonna do? So we're ready to put it to a vote.
Thank you. Any further, Craig?
Eric, how many bedrooms are proposed in those two?
Ten.
Total of 10.
Total.
Eight, eight off-street spaces. Five in each with four off-street parking spaces.
Anyone else from the board? Despina?
Eric, I understand we're voting on the original plans as they were presented. There's no, no dropping from the height. As far as attaching the requirement that there'd be no request for variances in the future, do you still stand by that?
Correct.
You do?
Yes.
And are we able to attach that to the home?
It would be. It would be, it would be a deed restriction. We would actually file the resolution saying that no variance for these homes, based on bulk, could be applied for or granted in the future.
So that stays, the rest?
Correct.
Reverts. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Leo?
All right. This is a minor subdivision application, so Joanna, nine members can vote. Someone needs to make a motion for minor subdivision approval to create the two 35-foot-wide lots. The variances would be two lot width variances, where 40 feet's required, and they're proposing each lot to be 35 feet in width. The conditions will be that if granted, the applicant will deed restrict each property such that no bulk variances could be applied for or granted in the future. And any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report, January 30th, and all, and the applicant will comply with all representations it made during the course of the hearing.
Mike made the motion.
Mike Tom. Mike and Tom.
Who's second?
I'll say it.
Tom's second.
Tom Collins?
Long case. Sorry everybody had to go through all that. The success of Margate today is really predicated on our reinventing ourselves by tearing down some of these older homes and revitalizing our neighborhoods. And I think that that is a very important thing that we need to do. However, in this case here, you're asking us to take three-bedroom house, which is not 100% coverage, if you look at the pictures, they've got a huge front lawn, and replace it with 10 bedrooms. It just doesn't fit the neighborhood. I see no hardship. The single-family home that was presented is beautiful. It could come in and be built with no variances. Maybe it should. Trying to justify how this would be better for Margate, I just couldn't do. I think that we have to be realistic. It is a narrower street. It is a through street. And there are four through streets to the Margate Bridge. Douglas, Huntington, Claremont, you can go on. So there are streets that get heavily traveled. This is one of them, between the schools, between castles, even me. I got through there when I hit home. It's just too much in too small of an area. If it was a larger lot, maybe it would work. But just because years ago, we decided 35-foot lots were okay there, doesn't mean that means it today. Today's code is 40 foot per lot, and it's 40 foot per reason, and it's safety, it's public safety, it's police and fire safety, it's neighborhood safety, children's safety. There's a lot of reasons we do this. And for us to change this at this point, I think would be wrong. So I vote no.
Clem Olszewski?
Well, first of all, I don't know how the other.
Microphone.
Would I take this as a threat? I sat out there on that street the other day, just looking at this property and visualizing those two houses on it. And they just don't fit. They don't belong there. Regardless of the presentations made and the testimony, I still do not see any plus for the neighborhood. I don't see any plus for the city of Margate. And I haven't heard anything that I consider a reasonable justification for the variances requested. The only reason that I can see would be a financial one for the developer, because he could most likely realize considerably more for these two than for a single home. And I was taken back to the book by Mr. Cox on zoning and land use, and there I distinctly noted where it said, "No C2 variance should be granted where merely the purposes of the owner will be advanced." I vote no.
Rich Patterson?
I've heard the applicant's arguments again, and again, and again, that these are all small lots, that these small lots fit in with this neighborhood, when from the applicant's own testimony, 50% are oversized, 50% are undersized. So for us to lean on the size of two more undersized lots when it's already a undivided oversized lot, I think a single-family home, and there's, if you look at Granville, if you look Gladstone, if you look at Frontenac, there are big homes on some of these oversized lots, and it makes it a mixed neighborhood. It makes it a nicer neighborhood. If you were, if there were, if we weren't sinking into the sea, if it wasn't for Sandy, and you could put two bungalows on there, I would say maybe that would fit into the neighborhood. But these are gonna be 40-foot-tall buildings next to these bungalows, which is unavoidable. That's what happens with Sandy. They have to be, they have to be up there. But I look at all the evidence. I've sat there and looked at that lot. I doubt this house would be built there, but that doesn't matter. If anybody, I don't look at it as a threat. If somebody says, "If you don't offer us this, we're gonna build something without variance," it's, "Well, God bless you. Go ahead and do it." Because that's what, if you meet all the rules, go ahead and do it. But I don't think that would be financially feasible in this neighborhood of little bungalows to put a $2 million house up. But again, that, that has nothing to do with this case. I don't think it fits in the neighborhood. I think it harms the neighbors, and I think the only benefit goes to the applicant. I vote no.
Mike Cristaldi?
Mike, 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 Mike.
I turned to one. Eighty years ago, when these subdivisions were going, garage doors were seven foot. Nobody in this room will drive their car through a seven-foot garage door anymore. Increase in this thing is not gonna help. And I agree with Clem on it being a threat, but it so happens, I like the threat. I think the bigger house would be nicer in the neighborhood. For, as the rest of the board members so far, I agree with them. I vote no.
Jim Gallantino?
I don't know. I listened to Jason, I mean David Chu. He presented some good testimony on the spreader lots. They're all across the street. They're 35 feet. I mean, looks like this was originally maybe a 30, maybe there were two 35s, and they put them together. I don't know. It's hard to tell. But I can see the board's case, and I can see where the taxpayers' case is. You know, they don't want more parking, but you know, you have a school around the corner that was just recently built, about 20 years ago, and the island does flood. But I just, I just can't, I just can't see the fact that these houses, if they were down to the ground, like the old-fashioned houses, they wouldn't be so big. But since they put a garage underneath, you know, that's what makes them higher. And it's, you know, we grant variances for 25-feet lots all the time. I don't see how this is any different. I vote yes.
Craig Palmisano?
This, two 35-foot lots, when you need 40 feet, you need 40 feet. There are 40-feet lots. Like we said, there's half and half on both sides of the street, half 35s and half larger. I'm not one for adding bedrooms to a street. I don't like that. Not at all. It's, there was three bedrooms there. You wanna put 10 bedrooms there? That's way too many. Even with eight bedrooms, I think it's too many. For subdividing that, the two lots, whether it was one nice lot, I'm against it. I vote no.
Despina Hess?
I would have to echo some of the concerns of the other board members. But to separate just a bit, it's really not about emotions or preferences or what we think would look better. It really comes down to, did your testimony and presentation satisfy the requirements of the ordinances that we need to enforce? And unfortunately, I don't believe that everything presented does satisfy the criteria that do need to be met. I unfortunately don't see a hardship as far as, you know, looking forward to a flex variance. I don't believe it satisfies either the C1 or the C2 criteria. You know, I don't believe that any aspect of our zone plan encourages undersized lots. And your experts and your testimony presentation, nothing was left out, but it just, in my opinion, based upon the law that we need to, you know, tailor your facts into, they weren't satisfied. When we went through the lot sizes, it's not just that they're 35-foot lots, half are 35, and the others are 40-foot lots. We're looking at 70-foot lots. It is 50/50, and we went through it together, and I pushed because I wanted those questions answered. And I truly believe that the balance of the neighborhood is what creates the characteristic of it that should be met. And by having that 35-foot lot next to the 75, excuse me, 75, and next to the 70-foot lot, you do create a balance. You do create the light, air, and open space that allows for the small lot to be next to the larger lot, and it allows for that space for all of the neighbors, the green space. And just to address the neighbors and for the applicant, parking has nothing to do with my decision, because quite frankly, while that's a practical effect of having additional homes, you weren't requesting a parking variance, and that's not your duty to solve the parking issue on this block or any block in Margate. So that has nothing to do with my decision. It truly comes down to whether or not the criteria were met, which I believe they were not, and I did not see hardship for it. So for all those reasons, I do not vote in favor of the application.
Ron Gruppo?
Okay. I've been listening to the testimony given by the residents of Margate and the attorneys, and I also don't feel that the parking is a consideration that we have to take into account when making this decision. I'm struggling with the fact that there are already, even though we say it's 50/50, there are already 35-foot lots on this block that have homes on them. And I feel that, you know, in my opinion, that we're trying to get, I heard testimony made, that the price point of these houses would be beyond the range of families, younger families with children coming into the area to live. But this house here would be way out of, you know, this house would be a summer home that somebody would come down to and, you know, do whatever they're gonna do for the weekends and the holidays and, and leave, which doesn't, in my opinion, satisfy or enable us to get closer to our goal, which is more families and that type of thing. I think the two single homes get us more in that direction. And like I said, half the lots already being a 35-foot size leads me to believe that, you know, there's two single-family homes would fit into the neighborhood, would fit into the lot requirements. And, you know, based on that, I vote in favor of the proposal.
Mike Richmond?
So when you live in Margate and you live near a commercial zone, you're always gonna have parking issues. Flooding, that's why we're raising these houses. That's why the houses are getting higher, because of flooding. Half the houses in the neighborhood are 35 feet. The 70-foot lot is like the anomaly. That being said, it's in an S25, 25 zone. The requirement is each lot to be 40 feet, and I really, it hasn't been proven to me that the hardship of not complying with that, so I'm gonna vote no.
The application does not pass. The vote is 2 to 8.
Seven to.
Seven to. Two to seven.
Next case.
I know it was a long application, Mr. Collins pointed out, but thank you all.
And Mr. Goldstein, while you're up, Andrew Ozer. I should've got to this at the beginning. I think we're doing something with this.
I indicated to Mr. McLaren earlier, and to you, Mr. Manos, that that application is being, at the board's indulgence, carried to the next month, just so we wouldn't have to re-advertise. And if anybody's here, that case will be heard at the March meeting.
Yeah, so are you okay with that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And so if anyone's here for Andrew Ozer, 36 West Drive, I meant to say it at the outset, but that's gonna be heard at our next meeting, which is March 28, 2019, 6:30 PM. In this room, applicant will not.
Leo, when was he? When was the last notification?
I don't have it in front of me. When, when the initial, I mean. Well, at some, at some point, let's, let's deal with this real quick. At some point, they're gonna have to re-notice the thing. We're not just gonna keep carrying it and carrying it.
Well, the other issue, this has been eight months.
January 18.
They noticed it on Jan, so they noticed for the, for the January meeting, we pushed it to February. So we only pushed it one time.
Okay.
If we're okay, I can make that, complete that announcement, and then, you know, I think by, maybe in March, maybe at the March meeting, if.
If you have something to say, go out in the hall, please.
Maybe at the March meeting, if it's not going forward, we're gonna, maybe not allow you to keep carrying.
Understood.
Is that?
That's fine.
Okay. So if anyone's here for that, Andrew Ozer, 36 West Drive, it's gonna be next month, 6:30 PM. In this room, March 28. Applicant will not have to re-notice or re-advertise.
Thank you.
Next case is Christopher Andoris Pizzani, 438 North Vendome Avenue, Block 623, Lot 18, in the S40 district, to grant C-variants relief for front yard setback, rear yard setback, side yard setback, combined side yard setback height, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, board chairman, board members. As you're aware, this application was pulled last month. We needed some clarifications, and they provided some clarifications. So my report is initially dated December 18, 2018, revised February 25. In regard to the application to Christopher Andoris Pizzani, 438 North Vendome Avenue, which is in the S40 WF zone. As you're aware, the S40 WF zone is a newly created zone. Actually, it existed this way, but we just gave it the designation of WF. Required first floor is nine plus three, or 12-foot to the bottom of the floor structure, or the garage below. We give nine feet above existing average grade. This application is deemed completed at this time. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new single-family dwelling on the bayfront within the S40 WF zone district. The woodwork portion of the property is within a riparian R-zone, which does not permit residential construction. So all the measurements were taken to the bulkhead as. So all the measurements were taken to the bulkhead as has been done in the past. Several variances are required as indicated in the report. Additional information is to provide from the testimony. Page two is the zoning schedule for the S40 WF zone. As continued on page three, the documents reviewed are on page three at the bottom and at the top. The variances are as follows. Again, a lot of these are related to each other because if you grant the side yard setback variance for the building, the side yard for the deck is permitted to go to the exterior of the building. However, so let's go over these variances. The side yard setback for the left and the right for the building, whereas the required minimum side yard setback is 10 feet and eight feet is proposed on either side. Side yard setback to the left and to the right for the lower deck. Again, it has to meet the side yard setback for the building where it's 10 feet and eight feet is proposed. Side yard setback for the upper deck for the left and the right. Again, it has to meet the 10 foot setback. It's requested to be eight foot. Combined side yard setback with a maximum of 22 feet, 16 feet is proposed for the building. And that carries through for the decks too. I'm not going to read all that. Rear yard setback for the deck, whereas the rear yard setback to the second floor deck is a minimum of 10 feet from the bulkhead face, zero feet is proposed. Rear yard setback for the building, whereas the rear yard setback to the principal structure is a minimum of 10 feet from the bulkhead face and less than 10 feet is proposed. It appears to be zero feet. Again, because below the first floor deck, it's fully enclosed. The only access to that area is through the building. And the ordinance says any attached, any accessory structure attached to the building becomes part of the principal structure. Rear yard deck elevation, whereas the rear yard elevation is permitted to be no higher than BFE plus 1.67 feet or 1 feet 8 inches, which would be elevation 10.67. And they are requesting BFE plus 7 feet. Again, this is a function of the garage being below the building. Building height, whereas the building height may be 30 feet from BFE plus four or if a garage is proposed below the structure, 30 feet from the average existing grade plus nine feet. 32.25 feet is proposed, so a C variance for the height is required. Waivers requested, no waivers have been requested. My comments are as follows. I'm not going to go through every single one. But comment number one, no waivers are being requested. Two, a CAFR permit is required for the development of the property, none of which has been provided. A waterfront development permit will be required for all the work. Waterward of the proposed bulkhead, nothing has been provided. And I raise that because there is a set of steps going from the deck onto the deck over the water that's not permitted. So the board may want to ask some questions about that. The existing bulkhead is over five feet below what is required. A new bulkhead meeting the requirements of the ordinance is proposed. The lot is proposed to be filled as the ordinance permits. The applicant needs to provide means and methods to prevent runoff from going directly onto the neighbors' properties. The filling of the lot is contributing to the height variance request. The existing lot is relatively low from a tidal flooding standpoint. So one reason that we allowed filling of lots in low line areas is to reduce the amount of tidal flooding. So the existing grade is causing the variance.
Roger, on that, you say it's contributing. Is it entirely caused by raising the grade?
They have a 30 foot structure that's measured from here. Because they're filling the land, the whole structure's not.
So it's entirely from raising the grade?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. There's no other reason? That's the only reason?
There is no other reason.
Right.
The proposed drainage pattern is not shown, but I think raising the property up and the testimony providing where the runoff is going to go will be helpful. I suggest that all bayfront development is that all roof runoff should be directed into the bay through gutter and downspouts, which is permitted by NJDEP standards, which helps the applicant and helps the city by reducing the amount of runoff going into the city storm sewers. Other variances are required but not shown. Again, that has been corrected. Item number nine, you can skip that. Sidewalk details will be provided. Concrete curving details will be required. Concrete driveway aprons will be required. Again, item number 13, my comment number 13, the deck side yards are all related and are a function of the side yard setback variance requested for the principal structure. Typically, the first floor deck side yard setback variance would be eliminated if a variance was granted for the principal building side yard setbacks. However, the height of the rear yard deck is not meeting the condition to permit this. As the board may be aware, we adjusted the bayfront height and width on several occasions to meet what was being built. The ground floor area appears to be part of the principal structure as it is enclosed on three sides and has a zero foot setback and 10 feet is required. The first floor rear yard is permitted to be a BFE plus 1.67. However, the height exceeds this requirement and drives a variance. The height of the first floor, the garage parking is driving the height of the deck up, as explained earlier. The second floor deck does not meet the building setbacks and requires a variance. Both required minimum side yards are being encroached and the combined side yards for all building structures and decks is not being met. Item number 18, I already touched upon.
Would you go over it again? I didn't understand.
The steps from the first floor deck onto the proposed deck over the water has not been, has not received any NJDEP permits. I raise that point because you can't access that deck if that deck over the water is not permitted. I guess the point is, to walk around the building, you can't walk around all four sides of this building. So the only access to that deck is through the house.
Got it.
Drainage is needed for the exterior shower. That's just a general comment. There are currently two bulkheads on site now. So they're not going to be gaining another 24 inches outsure this bulkhead to increase their setback. Portions of improvements to Lot 20 encroached on the property in question. The unique size, shape, location and topographic elevations does lend itself to a potential hardship situation. But the C1 and C2 criteria need to be satisfied in this application. Recommendations are in the report and I would like to turn it over to the applicant at this point in time with, I might need to chime in as needed, but Chris.
Fine. Thank you, Mr. McLaren, Members of Board. My name is Chris Balance and I represent Chris Andoris Pizani with respect to this application. 438 North Vendome Avenue, Block 623, Lot 18. It's in the S40 zoning district. And right now, it's a vacant lot, having been, I believe, demoed by the city about a year ago because the house was kind of sliding into the bay. There was a pool in the side yard, it became a hazard and I think it was stickered and demolished and the bank took it back. And you know that I am not one to bring before you, especially on my street, application with variances that are that number in the past 10. And I'd like to touch upon, or at least explain a little bit, as Roger tried to, why that is. The way the report's written and the way the applicant, application turns out because of the grade, the side yard setbacks, which typically would be a side yard setback on the left side or setback on the right and combined side yards, and that's that. But because of the elevation of the back deck being not permitted, he has to call out the side yard setback for it because it doesn't, it's not, it's not at the elevation that it's supposed to be. So it creates that additional variance. So there you add two more variances onto a side yard setback and side yard setback. Four becomes six. And same thing with the second floor deck in the back. Six becomes eight. We have, we have, we have side yard setback category broken down into eight variances when they're all side yard setbacks, is what they are. The situation that gives, that gives rise to that is, you're familiar with this lot, everybody's seen it. There's pictures in Roger's report. You can see that this lot, the fill in this lot, the grade of this lot has slid into the bay. I mean, a substantial portion of the top of this lot has disappeared, has washed out. Because for the last year, year and a half, ever since the house was taken down, there's been nothing to shore up what fill was on it for that period of time. So whatever washout from the entire neighborhood makes its way to the bay. And we've had a lot of rain the last couple of years. A lot of it washes through that lot and washes that lot out. So what the Pizanis are going to do is bring, is refill that lot and bring that fill up because at Sandy, and I forget these numbers right. At Sandy, the water in that area came up to elevation seven and a half approximately. The elevation of this lot, unimproved grade is about four and a half or less. What they're going to try and do with their grade is bring it up about two feet above where Sandy topped out. That brings, as Rich said, that brings the house up. The house as constructed meets the ordinance. It's not a 32 foot house, 30 foot house. But it's being put, it's being set on an elevation that's two feet higher than we ordinarily would have because we're going to try and protect against flood by adding two feet of fill.
Is it two feet higher than both neighbors or are they up to?
The grade?
Yes.
I suspect the grade will be higher than the neighbors. I suspect.
It is.
Okay. And that's where these guys can talk to you about the runoff going into the bay and how that's being channeled. This is simply an effort, this is simply an effort to protect against a situation where you're going to have water in the garage and water in the first floor. And that then drives the deck elevation variance, the side yard setback requirement, the side yard setback variance for the decks and the height variance. So while it looks like a lot of variances, they technically, there are a lot of variances, but they all are driven by a single condition. And that's what I just explained. Other than that, it's a proposed single family home for the Pizanis. They took a lot that's kind of difficult to build on. It's jammed at the turn of the bulkhead, kind of stuffed in there. You have a, the upland is limited. And we've done our absolute best to build, you know, to design a house that meets the neighborhood standards, meeting the setbacks as best as possible. The front yard setback is conforming. The side yard setbacks, we believe, are consistent with the neighborhood. We can put some testimony on in that regard. We're providing eight feet on each side versus 10 feet. And the rear yard setback, the principal structure meets the rear yard setback. It's the deck, the decks again, which would be permitted to go to the bulkhead, but because of their elevation, I have to ask for that variance. Arthur, please.
Chris, could you, could you address one thing before?
Absolutely.
And it kind of, number 25 of Roger's comments. The unique size, shape, location and topographic elevation lends itself to a potential hardship. And I'm looking at it, it's a 64 foot frontage square lot. I, what's, tell, and you just said something about there's an angle that's hurting something? Could you show why it's unique or what the problem, the hardship is?
Yeah, and I'm actually going to show that.
Okay. All right.
Arthur Chu needs to be sworn in, give you credentials.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Arthur Chu, 130 West Seaview Avenue, Linwood, New Jersey.
And you swear in front of the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Arthur, you're licensed, why don't you give the board the benefit of your credentials?
He did last meeting. We accept it, yes.
Okay, can we have him on this record? I just want him on this record, that's all.
Oh, okay, yes.
I'm a licensed engineer, licensed planner, licensed or certified floodplain manager.
And the board has accepted his credentials?
Yes.
That's my thing. Arthur, I'm not going to ask you, question after question after question. Take the board through the current zoning, the nature of the particular property that we're dealing with, the zoning classification, and then what is proposed.
Okay. Generally, to get on to some of the main issues of what's driving these variances is the flood elevation. Hurricane Sandy got to 725. The applicant's proposing to put his yard and garage at seven and a half. So that way, there would be three inches clear of Hurricane Sandy coming in again. That and its nature, the applicant could come in, put the bulkhead in, fill the lot. And as they fill the lot, then we come in and we may not need a height variance in that case because the existing grade would be a seven and a half and not down at four.
Let me interrupt for a second. The ordinance now permits filling, topping off a grade. And this, we could get a building permit for the height variance, but the other variances that.
Use a mic, just for the record.
But the other variances that, that spin off, off the height, overall height, we've got to ask for those tonight because we're not, like, for instance, the deck. The deck, you don't get the deck when you do your fill, when you're building permit with your fill. So we had, we could withdraw the height variance, but the decks would be out of whack. And so we're going to deal with all of it tonight.
Just as a clarification, you just said instead of at grade four. Are you saying that the curb there existing, is it at four foot?
The average grade on the lot is 4.9.
On the whole lot, but what about the curb?
The curb is like four, it's like, I think it's about.
4.16.
Reason I'm asking, you said a lot of it, it looks like a lot of it washed away. So was it already built up and we lost that? Or was it at the curb at grade?
The average, the at grade of the curb is 342.
Wow, okay.
So it's low there. And that's the whole premise of adding the fill, getting everything up out. The house he's building, if you put the average grade of seven and a half, when you look at everything from there, it's a conforming house. It's a barrage and 30 feet.
But for the side yard.
Well, wait, wait, what, it's conforming?
But for the side yard setbacks.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I'm just talking about the height issue related. But then the one issue we run into is when you have the house and you have the back porch on a house, you're going to want to walk out into the back porch. You're not going to want to go down three feet of steps. But the ordinance that's in effect right now has the maximum deck height as being 11.67, where this finished floor is up in the 14ths.
That's because the house is going up. That's because the house is coming up.
Right, exactly.
Why don't we, why don't we run, take the variances then and talk about, talk about each variance in that regard, one by one?
Okay. Yeah, I was sort of going through the height variance and then that leads into the rear yard variance with the rear deck of where that has to be. And because you're setting the house higher to get out of the flood and you want to walk out on having a house up at that height, if you put the three feet of steps or three feet differential in steps and you work down the steps, you're almost on a 10 foot porch, you're going to lose about six feet of it. And you're not going to have anything. And he's got three sliders coming out so he can enjoy the outdoors and the views. But you basically, the whole back porch would be steps down. So that's what's driving that height variance on the rear deck.
And Arthur, if the house was not going up, the deck coming out the back of the house would be permitted conditions.
Correct.
The fact that we're raising it with the fill and with the house is why we need the variance.
Exactly. So that's two variances that are basically being required of us because we're trying to mitigate a flood situation, which is unique topography to the lot. And that's the need for those variances. Going along with, to get back onto the size of the lot and the shape of the lot, this is.
Would you take the portable microphone and Chris can use the other one?
This is the lot or the area before the house was torn down. This is the subject property right here. You can see that you have a nice line of houses here that are all out. This house is tucked back. This house is tucked back. This house here is sticking out, but it's over water.
That's the existing house, existing property?
Yes, yes.
I'll call that A1 aerial photo when existing house was there, or when prior house was there.
2015.
Okay. Or I'll call 2015 aerial.
There's another house down here that's over the water that still exists over the water. And it was rebuilt or redone recently over the water. Yeah, this house isn't redone yet, but in now, current today, this house here that's out over the water has been redone and is out over the water. This, where this house is sticking out over the water, it's blocking the views of this house here that's tucked back. It's blocking the views of this house tucked back. So it's a little bit of a unique condition that we have here. If you notice on the site plan, how we're designing it, that wood, that brown there is the decks. That's the old footprint of the decks. That's the decks that exist here with the house and the side yard deck.
That's the, that's the platform that the house was on, essentially.
The platform the house was on and to the left, the one tucked back was basically a deck.
And that, that outline is grandfathered.
Yes. So Mr. Pizani is looking to, he's going to rebuild that and he's going to put it in. When we go along, there's a bulkhead there that's down at elevation three and four that is causing flooding in the neighborhood. He's going to put in a new bulkhead up to elevation eight, which is required by ordinance, which is going to help with the flood protection for the neighborhood.
Roger mentioned that the old bulkhead has to be removed. Is that correct?
So there's two bulkheads there.
Does the outside one has to be removed?
Yeah, the outside one. We're allowed to go two feet out in front of the original one. So you can't go two feet totally out, but you can go out a little bit. And we're going to work to get to that. It's going to be a new bulkhead, a new vinyl or composite bulkhead that's going to be up at elevation eight. Everything's nice and new and giving you that flood protection, going to retain the soils. Now we're bringing the yard up to elevation seven and a half. It's going to be a nice, everything flood protected in that area.
How will runoff get into the back? Which is one of the things that.
All the impervious coverage on the lot related to the building, all the roof gutters, we're going to take them, capture that and direct them through the bulkhead. So we're not sending anything to the street. Thus, improving the drainage for the neighborhood, helping out the neighborhood that way.
It'll be piped underground to the bulkhead?
Underground and through the bulkhead. It's going to be a solid pipe with. It's gonna be a solid pipe with, where the connection's gonna be above the height of the bulkhead. So no water will back up. If water backs up, it's gonna top over the bulkhead before it comes out of what we're sending through the bulkhead. All the runoff, any rainwater, we're gonna grade the lot, put retaining walls on the sides, or do grading. We're gonna try to do it without retaining walls, so that way it's not a big grade change because the neighbors' properties are at elevations four and five. So they're down a couple feet from where we're going. But this is where, by putting this yard and house up at this elevation, it's gonna help the city out in future years. As more houses we develop, hopefully they'll come in at this height too. And then eventually, the city could come in and fill the road, so then that way you're lifting the island. Maybe it'll last a little more with sea level rise, you know? We can fight it off for a couple more years. The, we're gonna get all the grading of the grass areas out to the street. Nothing's gonna go onto the neighboring properties. And I'll do a plan, and we'll make sure that everything's approved so we're not having any negative detriment to the neighboring properties. Along, so you can see, the yellow is that back deck.
Just for your benefit, while you're grading, is to do it without retaining walls.
Exactly.
We would prefer not, we've been going through this.
We prefer not to, too. And that's why we have those eight-foot side yards that we can grade and put swales and then slope down the impervious, I'm not, I think the pervious coverage. So there's gonna be some slope down, but it's gonna be pervious, it's not impervious. It's all grass areas, so it should be minimal runoff.
And the slopes come toward us.
Right. Well, there's, at some point, we're gonna have to slope back down to meet the neighbors, but...
Okay, because you're not sworn yet.
Yeah, or put a drainage pipe at the edge of the property. We'll do something so we're not having a negative impact on the neighbors. The yellow area on the rear deck there is the rear deck. You can see that the white area is the house. The alignment of the two grays on either side, those are the existing homes. We're trying to pull the home off of the water to create air, open space, and light, so that way the neighbors have a good view. They can see the sunset as it's setting a little bit off to the right in the height of the summer.
Are you suggesting, as opposed to trying to take advantage of the grandfathered footprint that's there?
Yes. And as opposed to, you know, there's a neighbor down the street who rebuilt his home over the water.
Rizzo, Rizzo's.
Yeah, we're not trying to do that. He's trying to help out the neighborhood.
You could build a house over the water, Chris?
You can't do that now. What'd you tell the house, Tom?
No, you can't do that.
There's, you have timeframes when you can do it. It's unlikely when, that we possibly be able to do that, but...
Right. Whatever, you're not proposing to do.
We're not proposing to do that. What we're proposing to do is pull that house back, give everyone good views, create open air, light, so everyone can enjoy the meadows and the water.
So the house, the principal structure meets the ten-foot required rear yard setback?
Yes.
And by pulling it back, although you're asking for those side yard setbacks, you're increasing the views for everybody.
If you look at, if you look at the proximity of the houses on each side, we're actually behind the house on each side. Our house is a little bit behind each of the houses on the right and the left.
Chris, how close are you, was the DEP permit?
It's being, paperwork's being put together. We wanna establish this footprint and then send it in.
Oh.
I have the contract to do all that, but we've put a hold on it. We wanted to see what the variances were, that we're gonna be granted or not granted, and then work from there. We'll see. So we're all geared up to go get the deck approved, get the bulkhead approved, get everything officially, have the permits, and then...
We actually met with DEP to make sure that that could be replaced in the footprint of the old, old pier. And what you see there is what DEP said is likely would, is what the permit would encapsulate.
Okay.
What is the required rear yard setback?
Ten feet.
And what is the setback, what is the proposed rear yard setback?
Ten feet.
The principal structure.
You can't go back anymore because then that'd be another variance because you'd be into the setback.
In the front yard, you mean?
In the rear yard.
Well, the rear yard zero setback because the porch is attached to the house, is that correct? But only because it's the deck?
It's covered.
Yeah.
That's right. Mike, the rear yard setback to the house is ten feet.
Right.
But we have, in front of that, to the bay, there's a deck.
Right.
A covered deck. That's to the bulkhead.
Right.
And that's, that's zero. That would be permitted.
I get that, but, but, but what I'm trying to get at is, you're saying that you're bringing the house forward.
No, we're bringing the house...
About the neighbors, but I mean, you have to bring it forward to be, to not require rear yard variance, correct? Is that right, or am I wrong?
No, you are absolutely right, that we're maintaining what's the required rear yard setback is.
Right.
What Arthur's saying is, as opposed to trying to get any structure in front of that based on what was there previously, trying, trying to go to DEP like the Rizos did to recreate anything over the water or toward the water. Like the house that was there before. They're only relying on one house that was done down the street. The Rizos, the Rizos were successful in doing that. I don't know how that got done.
Right.
But we're just suggesting that that's not what's happening. We are maintaining the setback, and that is, that helps, that puts us behind the neighborhood on each side. That's all. There's no suggestion that there was ever a plan to go build out into the water.
Right.
Saying, maintaining what's required now puts us a little bit behind each of the houses on each side. That's all.
Chris, does one of that say?
Yes.
Why then, under Roger's...
I can't hear you, Clem.
Why then, under Roger's schedule, does it say that there's zero rear yard setback?
Because that's the deck and the second floor deck.
No, it's...
It's both of them. It says rear yard, and then the next one is rear yard, second floor deck.
There is, the way I viewed it, is the ground floor to the first floor deck, it's fully enclosed. Might be open to the bay.
Oh, you're calling it, you're calling it a house?
I'm calling that part of the principal structure because you have a fireplace that goes three floors, four floors up. It's attached to the principal structure by ordinance, so that becomes part of the principal structure. I mean, it, it's...
Because, because...
You open up the sides a little...
Because the foundation walls are blocked?
Yeah, I mean, you can't...
They're allowed to be blocked, I mean, they're allowed to be, yeah. I understand, I hear what you're saying, but I, I don't...
In my regard, it's part of the principal structure, and it's a great zero-foot setback.
Create the zero-foot setback to the house?
To the house. The only way to access that area...
But our foundation system is no different than anybody else's.
I, it's fully enclosed. The only way to access...
Everybody's is.
My interpretation is it's a rear yard setback variance. Chris, what you're saying is visually it'll look like the house is ten feet back.
Yes, it will. Yes, it will.
And...
I, I, I have not heard that interpretation before.
I understand.
But that's why he's requiring, saying it's a zero-foot setback. Visually, it'll look like the house is setback, but you do have a enclosed structure there.
Isn't that how everybody does it? I mean, every...
The fireplace.
That's, that's the exterior, that's the exterior fireplace. It's not, there's not a fireplace down there inside. The fireplace runs out on the outside of the building, all the way down, all the way down to the ground.
And it's part of the principal structure.
What is?
There's no, there's no gap between there. If the board wants an interpretation on that, I think it's part of the principal structure.
Or is that, is that the standard going forward? If you have an enclosed foundation, it's part, it's part of the house?
It could be.
Everybody's is. Every house that gets built is.
Looks like part of the principal structure to me.
Okay. I, I, as long as everybody understands what we're talking about, I'm okay with it. Arthur, sorry.
I mean, it was suggested to open that up to the owner before. And there is reasons why.
I mean, on the, on this side over here, it is open on the first floor, but on below it, what's supporting that area is enclosed. On this side over here, there is a fireplace that goes there, and it comes close to the side yard.
That's on the deck, though, right?
That's on the deck. So that's sort of what we're, we're talking about in that area.
But just so we're clear...
The principal building, though, itself is ten feet off, and this is an outdoor area.
Right, with the house, what's shown in white there, right?
The house is shown in white.
And that's ten feet off the bulkhead?
And that's ten feet off the bulkhead.
Right.
The only thing that's closer is this fireplace area that's, it's solid fireplace.
Well, that can be detached from the house, can it not? The fireplace with the porch?
Yes.
Right.
Do you have, in your posters up there, do you have the right side elevation? Do you happen to have that in your plans?
I have a right side elevation that I can hang up here.
Could you hang it up there, please, and then you could explain to us? Looks like, looks like the house. That's the house. Just, I wanna see this.
And these are all in our packet, so I don't need to mark these separately. The only thing I marked is the aerial photo.
Right.
So in that upper right corner, where would the bulkhead be?
In this upper right?
Yes.
In this upper right hanging corner, the, all right. The bulkhead is right here. So that's the bulkhead line right here.
Okay.
All right. You can see it's an open-air porch. You look through the one side, you can see the fireplace through there. There is a gap between the fireplace and the outer column.
I see, but I think that view makes it clear both sides of the, of the issue here.
Right.
Where it looks like part of the house, but the main house goes up. So I, I think that explains it, and we all understand what the issue is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you understand?
Getting back to the, the history of the lot and...
But can I, let me, Arthur?
Wait, one, one second. Wait, 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 let me, let me speak a minute.
Yeah.
I just agreed with Roger, and I agreed with him. I said, I see Roger's point of view, and I see his point of view, so we now understand the different points of view. So Roger does agree with it.
Arthur, while we're on that subject, show the ground floor plan of what's within that space.
You mean on, on the porch area?
Yes, please.
On, on the porch area...
On the ground floor, house plan.
Oh, the ground floor house plan?
Yeah, there's cars in there, storage.
Yeah, so what we have here is we have two parking spots out in the driveway, and then within there, there's two cars parked in the garage. This is a garage area, and the garage wall ends at the end of the house. So that's the ground floor area. Over in this area is, off the front, what Mr. Pisani's doing is he has an enclosure to hide the trash cans behind doors, so that way the trash cans aren't out, they're hidden behind these doors. You go behind that little trash enclosure area is the stair, is basically where the stairwell comes in, but that's on the floor up, right, Arthur? So this is all garage storage, it's not a living area.
There's a notation on that plan that says storage?
Yes.
And Mr. Pisani told you that in the event an auxiliary, an extra parking space is needed, there is sufficient space behind the porch there?
That they can, they can pull in more cars as needed, so...
Just to show you that, it is a traditional, non-habitable at-grade space. I guess the exterior treatments make it look like part of the house, which I think is kind of nice, but...
You're not considering that part of the required parking, you're saying that would be additional that they could always...
Yeah, 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 yes, yes. I just wanted to let you know that there's not a living room and a bedroom and a lounge down there.
Well, we'll, we'll need a non-conversion agreement done, recorded indeed.
That's fine, that's fine. Go ahead, Arthur, thank you.
Getting back to the, the history of the lot and showing more of the, not that side, one of these here, has it? Oh, this one, I'm sorry. So here's the history of the lot. This shows that, what year is this? Nineteen twenty. This is one of the seven houses in Margate at the time. You can see that's the house that in 2015 existed. Same house out over the water. You can see all these houses, all these lots are way back. Over time, everyone filled out their properties, as was permitted with their deed. They had to fill. There was only two real houses that remained out over the water, this one and the subject property. As in, opposed to the previous one where I showed where the house is, this has no house there, and it shows, that's sort of the lot we're dealing with now. It's tucked back, it's not as large, does not have the depth that all the other lots have.
Where the other lots were filled out further.
Correct.
So the bulkhead actually comes in for this lot?
Yes.
How many feet?
It's...
Thirty-four.
Yeah, thirty-four feet.
Let's see if Mr. Pisani testified, because he just, he hasn't...
No, I...
Hasn't acted.
It is thirty-four feet. All these are a hundred-foot deep lots, and that's what, if you look on the tax map, it's actually two different lots that gives it a hundred feet. They're each fifty feet. This lot is sixty-four feet, or sixty...
Sixty-four feet.
Sixty-four feet deep.
So the, the typical upland of the other lots, particularly to the ocean side of that, is substantially larger.
Hundred feet. They're a hundred feet. All these lots have been filled out, and they're out, built out to a hundred feet.
Mr. Patterson, that's, that's where the hardship mention comes in.
If you, with the adjacent lots that are also tucked back on these reduced lots, both neighbors have three, four-foot side yard setbacks. They're really cramped in it. They don't have the larger setbacks. This lot, because of its width, is required to have a ten-foot. If it was a little smaller, it could have a small, it would have a smaller side yard setback requirement. Because it's sixty-four feet wide, it's required to have a ten-foot. If it was down to forty feet, it would be a five-yard, footyard side yard setback.
That's where we get into that idea about a sliding scale of jacking up, jacking it up from eight feet to ten feet?
So if you met the side yard setbacks, you could only put a forty-four-foot wide house on that property?
Right.
Okay.
So, and then the depth of the lot is, is restricting us. So this nee, what Mr. Pisani's proposing here is to give eight-foot side yard setbacks, which are twice what the neighbors are. So now you're gonna have twelve-foot wide between the homes and right, if they were built the same, if this house was built the same as its two neighbors, it would only be eight feet. So he's really trying to do as much he can, but he's trying to fit his house on the lot and do the unique nature of the lot and the topography and the size, shape, it's causing him those issues.
But there is a minimum of ten feet between houses on each side, correct?
Yes.
Chris, question for you, just so I can get this square in my head with the side yards, which is causing most of the setback issues. Is the only issue that the neighbors are smaller or is it because you have to slope and grade because of drainage? If there's a legitimate reason for it, not, well, my neighbor has smaller, so I...
No, that's not, that's, that is not the reason.
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
It's not the reason. The reason is...
If you could give me some actual good testimony...
The reason is the, the more limited upland that we have versus all of the houses on the ocean side, which...
There has to be a reason why, whether you have a fourteen-foot larger lot than's required for the zone.
Right.
So...
Because what Arthur just said, Tom, as you go to the, to the south side of our property, all those lots have upland of a hundred feet. We're, we are, because our lot was, didn't fill like the rest, have a limited upland buildable area of, of just sixty-four feet in depth versus a hundred feet, which is the more prevalent lot size.
So you're trying to say because you can't go out, you're trying to get a little bit more on the side?
Correct.
Exactly.
Correct.
Well, that makes a lot more sense than what the neighbor...
Yeah, yeah, that's what basically they're, we're trying to do. Because we can't go out back, we're trying to...
We're thirty feet behind, we're thirty feet behind everybody else.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, we're looking at a 1920 aerial and a current aerial?
Yes.
A2 and A3, thanks.
Thank you. All right, Arthur, let's come up to current then. I think we got that. Current, Tom, you want to talk about the variances then?
I think I addressed most of them, but yeah, we can talk...
Okay, let's talk about, we have the side yard setback variances that we requested. Touch upon again the ones for the deck for the record, so Mr. Mannus can get those straight, what those side yard setback variances are at the deck portion of the house.
For the rear deck?
Yes.
Well, I, I thought we were explaining through that if we get the side yard for the principal structure, then the side yard request for the variances really comes with, it, it's all, there's eight variances there, there's side yard setbacks that really are one or two. It's the side yard for one side and then the combined.
If our height was at where it's permitted to be, where it was supposed to be, those deck setbacks wouldn't be, wouldn't be called out, is that correct?
Well, if we eliminated the second floor deck too.
Correct.
So if the second floor deck was eliminated and we weren't going up for the height, it would be an eleven-point-six-seven deck and because we're trying to get the drainage and flood issues, now that requires us to have the higher decks and us the side yard setback.
And that's the same explanation with respect to the rear yard variances? Rear yard setback variances are driven by the, the height and the elevation gets pushed up?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that's due to the topography of the lot, flooding?
Very good. In terms of justifying those variances and positive criteria under the Land use Act, you believe that any, any purposes of the Land use Act are advanced by this plan? It should the board allow, it should the board approve?
I, I believe the board should approve these because it, it does advance the purposes of the...
We're talking about the general welfare and the, the bring, the fill of a lot that now drains into the bay at a very low elevation. Do you believe that promotes the general welfare?
Yeah, the general welfare that we're helping is the flood elevations. We're putting a new bulkhead in there that's helping out with flooding in the neighborhood. We're reducing the amount of runoff to the neighborhood by directing it all through the bulkhead, so that's helping the general welfare of the neighborhood.
It also talks about advances that person, the act, purpose of the act, which speaks to the prevention of damage to, to people, to persons and property by way of flood?
Yes.
And also, how about the aesthetic enhancement versus what's there now and what is proposed?
Well, and then we didn't even get into the aesthetic enhancements. The architectural features of this property, there's many of them that add to the beauty of what's being proposed. There's an empty vacant lot there right now. There's also, we could go through the process of chopping this building down and whacking different things off of it and still get maybe some of the goals that Mr. Pisani wants out of the house, but it will not be the architectural feature that we have with this property.
And you, do you believe as a professional planner, as you testified to, that a hardship does apply to this lot because of the way it's developed over the years?
Yes, due to the depth and topography of the lot, it causes a hardship.
And then with respect to both then, the C1 and C2 criteria, do you believe the variances can be granted without substantial detriment, substantial detriment to the public good or without substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance?
Yes, I believe these can be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
And with respect to the plan that was adjourned from last month, we've eliminated certain variances. We've eliminated landscaping variance, we've eliminated front yard setback variances, both for the front, front yard, the porch and balcony above, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Pisani and I spend a lot of time going over the plans, working through the plans to reduce the number of variances and try to make them as minimal as we can.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Hopefully it's clear enough.
I, I have a question. It's, uh... We've had this before, you have a hundred variances there. I understand one variance on each side creates four variances, so really the, the number doesn't mean anything. And the height variance, I, I don't see a problem. We, we want lots built up higher. So you're really over grade, you're gonna be thirty feet or whatever, it's, it's... But the elephant in the room to me is you have a sixty-four-foot wide lot, why do you need side yard variance? Why do you need that one variance that creates eight variances? I don't get it. You, you, you can build a forty-four watt foot wide house on this lot, which is a huge house, it's over four thousand square feet. I don't understand the original number-one variance. Forget all those supphyllos, if that's a word, variances. That, that's what I don't get on a lot this size that, that just, you have a beautiful architect who can make a beautiful house.
The other thing I don't get is this, um...
Put the microphone to your microphone?
Yeah, this exterior fireplace wall. I mean, we're talking about light and air and, and you got a wall going straight up the side of the, the back of the, you know, I don't get that.
Yeah, you have to, it has to ask for your...
Just state your name and address, we'll get you sworn in.
Chris Pisani, 403 Appinway, Doylestown, PA.
And you swear affirming testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Address Mr. Richmond's comment, please.
The reason why the fireplace is on the side, I, I put a lot of thought into this house. The whole purpose of this was to keep the deck back from going over...
Address the fireplace question.
It is, it's part of it. If I had, I could put the fireplace in and face it in the back of the house facing out. Within ten feet, you could not get around the fireplace. So instead of bringing out the deck even further, which I believe the height is unlimited over the water, I'm pulling the ha, the, the rear deck back at the ten-foot mark and putting the fireplace...
Please address this question about the fireplace.
I'm getting there. The fireplace is on the side, so you can use it within the ten-foot area. If, if it was turned on and put into the back of the house, the ten-foot area would not be enough area to get around the fireplace itself. So I, I, do you understand what I'm trying to accomplish?
What I'm saying is that, Roger, does the fireplace wall create the zero setback variance? So...
The ordinance reads this, section 175 dash 33. General design standards...
Listen to this, this is important and it's, it's pretty clear.
All decks and patios at or below finished floor elevation shall allow penetration of water. The following shall be permitted: decks with spacing between boards and no impervious surface below; brick pavers laid in sand or stone dust with no impervious layer below. And what's the other one? By two minutes concrete or monolithically poured concrete patios are prohibited. So you're not meeting any of those, so that's why I said it's the building setback to the rear, because to me it's part of the building.
So is the, instead of listing the variance for all these, it's make it part of the principal structure?
I understand, I just, I guess...
Is the lower, is the lower deck basinar?
Well, there's a roof above it.
Right. A roof or another deck?
There, there's two solid decks and then I, I presume the ground...
The, the upper deck is gonna be a solid deck, fiberglass, so you don't have water dripping through.
Right, I get that. But what's the...
So at grade, what's, what's the surface of the ground there?
What's the ground?
Of where?
Of the ground on the first floor deck?
First floor deck?
Right behind the bulkhead, where the fireplace, where one of the fireplaces is.
Yeah, your first...
Oh, that's gonna be eight inches below first floor deck.
What, what's the material?
That's gonna be Ipaqia.
Ipaqia?
Yeah.
We're talking about the deck off the main living space?
We're talking about underneath.
You're talking about the ground level, right?
Underneath that deck.
Ground level, ground level.
What's gonna be underneath?
Sand, sand, sand.
There's no, there's no patio down there, it's just sand.
But water can get to it, that's...
But water can get, get through the Ipaqia deck, it's on spacing it.
But what about the deck above?
The deck above, we haven't decided on. If, if you're saying that...
And the deck above that is what?
He hasn't decided on that, that's what he said.
That's where, you're talking about the second floor deck.
Second floor deck is gonna be solid, correct?
I was trying to do that for the purpose of water protection, correct, for, for...
The first one has roof.
Right, there's two, there's, there's two decks, that's all, there's a...
Yeah, but the other one's set back in on the inside of the fireplace. And the covered second floor deck is what's creating the zero...
Right, right.
First, second, third.
I just, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm getting caught off guard by the, the house, a house with two decks, all of a sudden the at-grade space is part of the house, I don't, I don't... I just don't get, I don't get that. But every other house we've ever done has two decks and an at-grade space and I've never heard it be called part of the house before. I don't know that that matters one way or another, I think the board understands this house is no different than any other in terms of its construction.
Mike? The other, well, and also speak to the fireplace, I spoke to the neighbor on that side and, and he'll probably testify in a little bit or come up and speak to it, but when we spoke, he actually said to me, he liked the fireplace there because it blocked the view, so anyone out on the, on that deck isn't looking out and down at his property. It sort of restricts people looking at him and...
So I'm kinda seeing what Roger's talking about now. So you're, the deck on the first and second...
We can swing the fire, the fireplace wall, we can swing that around and put it up against the house.
Okay, but, but, so if they do that, is it still, are we still calling it a, a zero setback?
It has nothing to do with the fireplace.
Yeah.
That's right, it doesn't have anything to do with, okay, so zero setback is because the deck on the first floor and the deck on the second floor are actually right to the property line?
Right to the bulkhead.
Right to the bulkhead.
Mr. Richmond, that...
Yeah, but they're, but it's a ten-foot setback, so why, how can, how can you think that you can do that?
That would be okay if...
I, I get the first, I get the lower, I get it because you were right. See, I'm okay with the first floor deck because I get it, because we're putting the fill in and you gotta be higher. I get that, okay? The second floor deck, I'm not sure I get. I mean, I get that you want a second floor deck, but you know, that's, I'm building the house right on the bay now, believe me, I, we got a twenty-five foot setback to the deck.
We are on the same page, we're on the same page, I, I understand what you're saying.
You know, and so I, I, I get that.
I understand what you're saying.
But now I understand, I didn't really, now, now I get it.
On the main living space, on the second?
So Chris, you're moving the fireplace wall to the...
Fireplace on the side will go, go up against the house wall.
But that's... Still doesn't relieve the variance that you're gonna have.
No. Which variance, side yard setback variance?
Rear.
What?
Cause it's, no, it's not.
Chris, I don't, Chris, I don't know anybody objected to it and you said the neighbor liked the fireplace where it was, I...
All right, then we're, then, we prefer to leave it where it was.
Did you object? I don't know who objected to it, that you say you're doing that.
I was just trying to adjust Mr. Richmond's comments.
Well, no, I...
Well, no, that's not what he was saying though, I think there's a misunderstanding here.
Okay, then let's just leave...
So if we hear the, from the neighbor, will we hear from the neighbor? You're the neighbor? Okay.
Haven't decided yet.
Okay.
I thought that the fireplace wall was driving the rear yard setback.
No, I'm sorry.
It's the side, it's the covered second floor, it's the second...
Well, it's a combination of that, but I, I, I think as presented, I mean, the second floor deck's kinda driving it, so...
Okay.
They're all related. Yeah, I, I, I don't think the fireplace was...
You're right, I'll leave it alone, I thought it was a problem.
I think it looks better the way it is, personally.
Chris, I'm, I'm more concerned myself with the combined side yard setback and the...
One at a time, please, Craig, no, Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned with the side yard setbacks. As far as the sixty-four-foot lot, like Rich was saying, sixty-four-foot lot, you take twenty feet off of that and you still have the combined side yard, two feet deficient, but you would combine, you would conform with the two side yards at ten-foot each to give me more room between houses. I mean, we, my, my concern here is air, light, space, the view of the bay, right, the southerly breezes coming through between buildings. We have three foot on, you have three foot on one house.
This is the man who makes that decision.
Yeah, we're, you have three foot on one house. I, I, the air, the light, everything, there's a lot, there's a lot of variables. I think, um...
Maybe that would help?
I think it would help. I, I'm, I was a fireman in Atlantic City and buildings too close to each other, fire travels from building to building a lot of times. And I, if it says ten foot, I like to see ten foot, you know what I mean, on the side yard setbacks? But you, you want two more feet, on a, you want four feet more and you have sixty-four feet on the lot, that's my concern.
Just curiosity, Craig, Craig, curiosity to address what you just said. I'm trying to wrap my head around it and normally in a lot we'll see ten foot on one side, eight foot on the other. This one's saying ten and ten. If they were willing to adjust it to ten and eight, that would be a better...
Well, even a ten, even a ten and ten, they're still short, Tom.
They're still short two feet for combines, they, they need...
Oh, for combined.
But it, but it gets rid of a lot of the variances if they get set in that.
It gets rid of a lot of the variances if you get a ten and ten.
Yes, it does, that's my concern too. It gets rid of the side yard variances on the decks.
Yeah. Yeah. Twelve variances definitely.
Anyone else from the board? You have anything else, Chris? I'd like to open the public comment, if anyone has something to say. Please state your name and address and then be sworn in.
I'm Mark Jacobson, I live at 419 North Vendo, Vendo Avenue, I've been there for thirty years, this May.
And you swear affirming testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
This is, this creates a lot of, I give you guys trem, and ladies, tremendous credit. I, I'm sitting here, it's the first time I've been to one of these meetings in eighteen years when I supported a, an application that Mr. Bellinson represented when Judy Serini raised her house. And I, I'm just concerned about the, the mass of this house on the size of the lot. I don't have any specifics. I'm a pediatrician, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, I'm a homeowner, I've been in Margate for thirty years. The street is very much to scale right now. It seems to me the scale of this house for the size of this lot is out of proportion. And that's really all I'm going to say. I, I mean, you guys have to do the job. It's, it's, I don't want to have an angry neighbor. I'm so happy that he bought the lot so he can develop it because it's been a real eyesore for us for many, many years. By the way, the water really doesn't come across that bulkhead during the storms, it comes from the end of Union Avenue. I've watched the water go by from the Halloween storm in nineteen ninety right through to Sandy, but it's still nice to not have the silt washing off an undeveloped property into my pool. I, I just think that you need to think about if, if the neighborhoods are going, going to become less quaint and less small-townish, I get that. I get that, that we, we all wish that our homes were bermed up two feet so that I don't have to put sandbags in front of my garage doors. But the side yards are gonna, limiting the size of the side yards are going to significantly affect the way that, the way it feels when you're standing in my yard looking toward the bay.
Are you directly next door?
We're across the street, so...
Across the street, huh?
So the height's gonna affect us because the sun sets on that side, but I get that. And, and I, I actually spoke to, I, I spoke to Roger today because I said, you know, that makes, that's gonna make it a problem for us because the sun goes down and we have the pool there and I feel so fortunate to have what we have. I, I'm not jaded, I, I understand, living in Margate and having a pool at your home and four bedrooms, my kids grew up there, I feel so lucky to be a part of this community and as it changes, it just feels like it's become such an, an inconvenience to be one of the original residents. And I, you guys have to make your decision, but that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the time.
Anyone else? Please state your name and address and be sworn in.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Joe Chakin, we have a home at 434 North Vendo.
And you swear affirming testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm very happy that he's building a home on that lot. We bought our house about two years ago and, you know, we're thrilled that he's building a nice place.
And where are you in relationship to the lot?
We are, if you face the bay, we're just to the left.
Adjacent?
Adjacent.
Okay.
And, you know, I looked carefully at the plans and I looked at his backyard setback. I, I'm not quite familiar with the terminology. I don't have much of a problem with that. I, I guess my only issue is the, the side yard setback. And listen, I want him to have, you know, a really nice home and have the house that he wants, but our house on, if you face our house on the left, we've got about four, maybe five feet because it was built way before any of these requirements were in place. I, I am concerned that if it's narrowed too much, there may not be room enough for these swales, et cetera, in addition to the, the light and air, et cetera. And if there are retaining walls within that eight feet, that's a concern for me as well. So I want him to have a, a great house, I really do, I'm thrilled that he's there, but that's my concern and the rest, as, as Mark said, I leave to your discretion.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Public portion's closed. Any other comments from the board?
I'd say one more thing just to be sure.
Yeah, go, go, no problem, I'm sorry. No, you're sorry, I'm okay with it, go ahead.
If there's ten feet on either side, I'm, I'm okay with everything, so I want to make that clear. You do okay? Do I okay?
Because it'd still be a, there'd be a combined variance, but each side would be okay. I have a comment, it's not a prepared statement. Just in support of the...
So you're not reading, I can tell.
No. Just in support of the maintaining the ten feet, we so support raising the lots and raising the grades. It helps everybody, and eventually, everybody would be up there, but because the neighbors are lower, it gives you more room to alleviate any potential runoff. I just want you to address that, if, before there's any vote or anything, or give you the chance to.
Side yard setback issue?
Using the ten feet gives you more room to address that issue.
Chris, before you answer that, just basically, you know, we're talking about twenty-four inches on each side.
What I'm going to ask simply is that the board vote on those two setbacks separately? And if they are denied...
I don't have a problem with that.
That's, that I think, that I think would solve the problem.
Do you have a problem with it?
I'm just looking at it. No, I don't have a problem with that. Be the first... We do a vote first as to the side yard, I guess basically the first six on your list.
It would not be the combined.
Can we split them? Because they affect each other.
Not combined, no, not combined.
Not the combined, just the eight foot versus ten foot?
Yes.
That's, that would be great. Thank you. Then I'm not going to address the other issue that you asked about.
Yes.
The width for the swell and stuff like that. Thank you. I'm good, I don't have anything else to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
We still have the zero setback to the bulkhead.
You have the height, you have the height, you have all the other variances, but all that will be voted as one vote. The side yard setbacks being ten feet on each, being eight feet on each side is a separate vote.
Right.
Do you follow it? You got that?
Can I ask one question now?
Yes.
Just to expedite this?
Yes.
Can the eight foot setback be a yes?
Is there a reason?
Then no, you don't have to give a reason.
Oh, I don't know.
That's fine. I think there's enough information on the record already regarding that.
Yeah, I think there's enough information. If you want to say something briefly, fine, but...
You can say yes or no. Yes, Clem. Speak into the microphone, please.
Is it eight foot versus ten foot? Is that what we're going to vote on?
What we're going to do is vote...
Yes, we're voting on the minimum side yard setback on each side, not including the combined side yard setback, but the minimum ten feet as opposed to eight feet on each side.
Well, I think what we're going to do is we're going to frame a motion for, or what we are going to do is frame a motion for a side yard setback, just a side yard setback of eight feet on each side where ten feet is required. If that passes, we'll go on to the next one. If it fails, we'll still go on to the next one, but he's got to, but then he's got to comply ten feet on each side.
We can do both side yards at the same time.
Yeah, sure.
No, 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 right, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so someone needs to make a C variance relief for the side yard setback on each side of eight feet where ten feet is required. That applies to the house, the lower deck and the upper deck.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Tom Collins?
No.
Clem Wazleski? Rich Patterson?
I just want to reiterate what I said before. I think they're doing something we really want them to do, but I think the problems that it may cause are alleviated if we have the ten foot setback instead of the eight foot setback, so I vote no.
Mike Cristaldi?
I'm in agreement with Rich with that on the side yard setbacks. As Craig said, with a forty-foot ladder up for a fireman, you need seven feet at the base. For a guy to get behind that, he doesn't have enough room to pick up a forty-foot ladder and move it, even with two guys. I got a vote that I'd say no.
Jim Gallantino?
No.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
No.
Mike Richman?
No.
The side yard setback does not pass.
All right, so now we'll move on. So essentially, essentially, he's not asked to comply with the side yard setbacks, so not, but not the combined. So now the second motion, someone needs to make a C variance relief for the following variances, which, I'll summarize them, but they're basically number seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve in Roger's report, except the combined yard number's going to change. So it's a combined yard setback of the building would now be for twenty feet where twenty, twenty-two feet's required, but instead of sixteen feet, the proposed is twenty feet, and that's to the building, to the decks, and to the decks. And there'd be a rear yard setback to that second, to the second floor deck of zero feet where ten feet's required. A rear yard setback to the first floor deck, which Roger interpreted as becoming part of the principal structure, but I think everyone understood the testimony, of zero feet where ten feet's required. A rear deck elevation of sixteen feet where ten point six seven feet is the permitted maximum, and a building height variance of about thirty-two point three feet where thirty feet's the permitted maximum. The conditions are set forth in Mr. McLaren's report of February twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. The other thing that Mr. Gallantino mentioned is the non-conversion agreement for all the space on the, below BFE, and...
I have a question on this combined side yard setback. We're presuming that they're going to come in at ten. That they're going to come back in at ten feet?
Well, they can come back in whatever they want over eight feet, but I think they...
It has to be ten on each side.
Right.
Because they're not getting, they're not getting granted variances for...
So I just want to make sure that they're...
Correct. They don't have any variances for side yard setbacks with the exception of the combined, and the combined's going to be twenty feet where twenty-two feet is required.
Leo, before the, I'm sorry to interrupt, Roger had recommended us addressing number three of his comments, was that resolved?
What was that?
The waterfront development permit. I believe, I believe so. He said he has it ready to be applied for, and, yeah, that's been addressed.
You ready for a motion?
And the stuff about the curving details, driveway details, all fine.
All right, we're good?
Yes, go ahead.
Motion.
I'll make a motion. Mike, Jim.
Tom Collins?
Long way to get to a final end. Actually, I give you a lot of credit for taking this lot, which has been falling into the bay and redeveloping it, raising the grade. The height variance to me is de minimis because I think eventually all of our curbs at three and four feet are going to have to come up to six and eight feet. The streets are going to have to be raised over time. So forward thinking, fifty years from now, I think that's an area where we're going to be. I think the ten foot is a good side yard setback for you. You get a little bit less house, but it's not much. I think what you're doing with the area and the neighborhood, it'll fit better. It's very, much more positive than eight foot would have been, and it's really no detriment to the neighborhood. I think with your bulkhead and the FEMA and everything that you're doing, it's going to be an improvement and good for Margate. So I vote in favor.
Clem Wazleski?
Well, I certainly agree with the pediatrician-type gentleman, this is way too much house for the lot. It's massive. The increases in the side yard setbacks will certainly help that aspect of it. The other things, even though I don't much like them, I think Chris has justified them within our ordinance. So I have to reluctantly vote yes.
Rich Patterson?
You've designed a spectacular house here, but this whole board's been doing this a long time, and to design a spectacular house that's forty-four foot wide instead of forty-eight foot wide, I think is not a problem. I'm sure you can get just a spectacular house, a little bit smaller or whatever you do. I have no problem with the height, for the same reasons that Tom said. Everything should be, the ground levels should be coming higher. I have no problem, I understand Roger's point of view with a zero setback, I understand Chris's point of view. I fully would support the applicant getting full use of his bayfront there. It's much harder now that houses have to be so much higher, and I think this board bends over backwards trying to help applicants in this. It's, the lot's in disrepair, but you're going to make it a beautiful lot. I absolutely vote yes on this.
Mike Cristaldi?
With the rest of the board members, I agree, so I'm going to vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
Well, it was ten years of hard work there, getting that house torn down. And the guy you bought the house from, he was complaining a lot about the condition of that property, and we finally got it taken care of. I applaud the house, I can't wait to see it get built, and I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
Certainly, anything is an improvement from what was there. I had been in that house many times. Certainly, the increases in the side yard setbacks help. I have no issue with the height, and I understand the whole topography of the property is an issue. Certainly with the new bulkhead, there's an improvement to flood protection for the neighborhood. I think the house is setback enough from the neighbors is an improvement as well. I vote in favor of the application, it's a really nice house.
Mike Richman?
With a lot that size, I still don't kind of understand why the architect didn't design the house the way it was supposed to be designed, with the setbacks. You know, that just kind of, I don't get that. So I'm glad, if you decide to go ahead with it, that we're going to have the ten foot setbacks on each side. I'm still not really happy about the zero setback for that second floor deck, but the neighbors seem to be okay with it, and they're going to be, people affected them as, so I'll vote a yes.
Application passes seven to nothing. Chris, will you come sign through?
We're going to take a five-minute break. We're back in order. Let's have a seat. We're skipping number eight. These, I think, yeah, these will definitely won't be as long as the first two. This next case is Christopher and Mary Ann Beck, twenty-one North Yercoy Avenue, block two ten point oh two, lot five in the S twenty-five district, who grant a C variance for relief for accessory building area at accessory building height and possibly others. Taxes and whatever occur and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. I'll keep this one pretty darn short. They're converting a garage to an oversized shed, so the garage height is grandfathered in, but because it becomes a shed, the nine-foot height, they need a variance for the thirteen point eight foot, and accessory structure for the area, whereas eighty square feet is required maximum, and one hundred and eighty-seven square feet is proposed. One waiver is variance checklist item one A, and I see no reason why that waiver could not be granted. And that's, they meet the parking requirements with or without the garage, so in my opinion, that's a moot point. But I'm going to turn it over to the applicant.
Thanks, Mr. McLaren, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening, Joel Fleishman, appearing here this evening on behalf of Chris and Mary Ann Beck, the owners of twenty-one North Yercoy Avenue. Mr. McLaren said it well, it's a fairly straightforward, simple app compared especially to what we've heard tonight. We have a house, that's an existing house, they've owned it since two thousand and eleven, they've been here. It's a two-story, four-bedroom house with a detached garage. The existing garage is one hundred and eighty square feet, and what the Beck's would like to do is take the front one-third, leave, keep that remaining as a garage storage area, and take the remaining two-thirds, do some architectural opening that Peter will explain when he reviews the plan, and basically put an outdoor bar for their family to enjoy the backyard they have. They have a very nicely improved backyard. There's going to be some additional improvements with pergola stretching across the living area out there. And they do need two variances. One, because we have an accessory structure that already exists at one hundred and eighty, about one hundred and eighty-seven square feet. Ordinance allows us really to have two accessories at eighty, so one hundred and sixty would be allowed, but we're over that, and we have an existing building that's thirteen point eight feet in height, and nine feet is the, is the limit per the ordinance. So with that, I'd like to have Mr. Weiss sworn, and then he can explain a little bit more about the plan, the setbacks, and how we're not really impacting any of the neighbors. I just would like to add that behind Mr. Beck's garage, immediately behind, which I guess would be Hanover, he backed, his garage backs onto the neighbor's garage. There's a solid wall there that, that part of the bar would be opened, so that'll, they'll be, their backs will be to a garage. And the other side of the garage wall is not being opened, and that also affects to the side of another house, but that will not be impacted by this project. So with that, Mr. Weiss would be sworn in.
Just state your name, business address.
Peter Weiss, one-on-one North Washington Avenue, Margate.
And you swear affirming testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Nice.
Mr. Chairman, necessary to qualify Mr. Weiss as an expert?
Have you appeared before this committee before, Mr. Weiss?
Yes, I have.
As himself.
Let's try to keep it short. Anyway, explain, I know you prepared the plan that's before the board tonight, correct, Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Would you explain to them what we're proposing?
Okay, so if you've driven by the site, you'd see that it's occupied by an existing two-story house, which has four bedrooms in it, which would only require two parking spaces. There's an existing garage all the way in the back corner of the property, because they don't really need for parking, they've been using it for storage. So what we'd like to do is take basically the front seven feet, maintain that as storage, take the back eleven feet or so, change, convert that to a bar. We're going to leave the roof, so the roof will remain as-is. We will remove the rear wall, you know, part of the left side wall. The bar will be probably granite top with stone, and just like a little mini fridge out there. Between the garage and the house, we're proposing a pergola structure, which likely be vinyl, like the two-by-ten simulated vinyl, just going between the house and the garage to provide a little bit of shade in the summer. So with the roof remaining as-is, the height doesn't change. The building, looking from the street, would look exactly the same, except we're going to re-site it, put a new door on the front. So, but looking up the alley, it's going to look the same size, we're not adding to it. You could argue that we're making it smaller by taking out a couple of walls, but, you know, effectively, it's the same size. We are leaving the right wall, so it's still going to be screened from the house to the right, and it does back up to a garage from the property in the rear, so that effectively creates a back wall to our bar area, and would shield it from the neighbor to the rear.
Mr. Matt, just for the record, Mr. Weiss is referring to the site plan, which is a plan that's, like, can we just have that marked as exhibit A one?
Sure, A one site plan.
But what he's referring to here is exactly what's...
Peter, Peter, are they, is it going to be rolled down or on them, or wide open?
No, he was planning to just leave it open for the winter.
Wide open walls?
Yeah.
Okay. And Roger, is there a size on the pergola? Do we have a requirement on the size of the pergola?
What pergola?
There's a pergola in the backyard.
It was in the ordinance.
Yeah, for height, I believe. I'd have to look on that.
Is it existing, or is it...
No.
Peter, what was the dimensions, and where's the location of the pergola?
Well, it's all these dotted lines, dashed lines here.
So the whole backyard is going to be a pergola?
Well, a good portion of it, yeah. It's like the whole area between the house and the garage.
Yeah, that's the whole part.
Pete, isn't it open to the ground below?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it'd be open, yeah, like Y sixteen X seven.
Pete, can I ask you a question? Because there's already like a dining table and everything out there. The structure, as it's going to be modified, there's going to be able to have space inside for people to hang out, like the new bar area.
Yeah.
So you're actually going to minimize sound, because people will be enclosed rather than outside in this patio section.
Yes.
So there'll be less sound affecting the neighbors, probably.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Joel, I, in looking at this, in reading this, I saw no mention of a pergola. I don't know if I just missed it, if I, what?
It's on the plan.
No. Okay. Existing pergola?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, I just have to see. Thanks.
Dimensions, I asked you?
I think you might need a variance for that, which I don't think would be a problem, but it may be wise to ask for one, and...
Well, the distance between the garage and the house is about eleven feet.
Yeah, but it's a pergola.
Yeah, I had to get a permit for mine.
Could be the depth of the garage, which is eighteen feet.
The pergola was considered a structure.
Really?
So just for the record, since you guys are talking, he said it would be eleven by eighteen feet pergola. Eleven foot by eighteen. So that would be bigger than our ordinance.
What I was saying was, I think they should, they should probably, he's looking, he's considering it right now. I'm guessing that it would need a variance, and I think it should be amended to include that as a variance. I want his opinion as the expert.
Which the applicant would certainly ask for, if that's necessary by the standards
How high is that pergola? How high?
Is there any, anything along the property line of your property that separates it from the adjacent garage, or the adjacent garage going to be the back?
Just the back wall of the garage, yeah.
So the neighbor's garage is effectively going to be your back wall.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes, I think I understand your question, if you're saying, is there a solid back wall right behind where we're looking sitting? Yes.
I have a couple of pictures.
But that solid back wall is not yours.
No, that's the garage of the neighbor. It's, it's, butts up against... It's a butt's up against the Beck's property. And I think there's only about a foot or two of space.
What's that existing block wall that you're going to remove? What's it made out of?
I'm going to throw that over to Mr. Weiss. I did want to add, unfortunately, Mr. Beck is in Florida, couldn't be here, but he did tell me, he went around and spoke to the neighbors immediately in his surrounding area, especially the ones behind and next door, and represented to me that no one had any issue with this, and actually was very happy to hear about this project and supported it.
And he had to invite all the neighbors to this bar?
To the open.
Okay.
To the open.
Will there be a draft? Will there be beer on top as well as a stock?
I asked him that, Richard, and the answer is no.
Okay.
But it could be in condition.
I could tell him it's necessary.
Do we need to know what the garage was made out of?
Peter, the question, the question is, do you know what the back wall is made of?
We're removing, we're removing a wall.
Yeah, these, the existing walls are framed.
Frame?
Yeah.
It's not block, it's frame?
It's an older garage.
Okay.
So this is looking, well...
Leo, you want to, should we mark this as, I don't know, how many pictures are you going to?
Just showing a little bit of the garage behind, if you want.
That's not part of your package?
No, correct.
All right.
Yeah, it does.
It was in, it was in the application.
If it's, if it's in the application, we're fine. Bottom right picture with the application. I'll call it A2.
I got a lot of pictures.
Pete, my concern is that rear wall of the garage should have been blocked, because it's a foot off the line.
I built 80 years.
It still was.
But it wasn't.
It's a fire-rated wall, and you take that out, now that combustible roof, which is the ceiling of the bar now, becomes exposed within a short distance from the line.
It's the same roof that's there.
I'm afraid of a potential fire hazard there.
It's the same roof that's there now.
Didn't you say the back wall is framed?
Yeah, the roof is framed.
It's framed. The wall or the roof?
The roof, the wall.
Both. So there is no firewall there?
Well, the shooter.
But there is.
Doesn't change the hazardous situation.
Peter, you're showing the pergola going into the bottom eve of the garage. Is that what you're going to, is that your height? You're not going to exceed the...
Oh, you want a height? Actually, there's a second floor overhang of the house towards the rear. We were going to maintain that, so if you want a height.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to say it's larger than permitted.
And we're going to ask for the variance.
You're going to ask for the variance for a pergola that's larger than permitted.
So, yeah, I'd say the top of the pergola is about 11 feet above grade.
In height.
Isn't it exact sized on here?
No. That's why I put it in the record.
11 by 18.
11 by 18?
Yeah.
And then you said no higher than 11.
Yeah, that's, I think that's withdrawn, though, isn't it?
You don't have the measurements.
I don't have the measurements of it.
But we'll agree to that.
But that's, that's...
That's what we will comply.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, let's clarify that. I mean, the pergola, there's this little overhang in the back, so between the overhang, the second floor overhang of the house, between that and the garage, it's 11 feet, but then there's an extension, I guess you'd say, for another, almost six feet towards the rear, where it would become about 14 feet wide. You follow what I'm saying? Right? Right here, this little area here.
Living area within, right up against the property line? It's not living area, right? It's an accessory structure.
You know, remember, the bar is going to be separate and sealed from the storage area. There's no cooking going on out there, there's no sink going on out there. It's just an enjoyable area to sit and store. So it's nothing flammable that's going to be out there, number one, and, well, from what has, what I understand is how is the person is going to use it, the applicant's going to use it.
Yeah.
There is no cooking.
And it's going to be open to the elements, so it's going to be stone and granite and...
And to be honest with you, you can take a gas grill and stick it right on your property line, cook something on it, so what's the, you know, what's the issue?
Right.
It's a tank sitting out there right next to it.
Well, they're not going to be growing inside the garage.
One at a time, everybody. Go ahead, Roger.
Jimmy, which will be doing a fire review for this?
I got to see what's on the permit, how they're going to build it. I mean, if it doesn't warrant it, then there's nothing I can do about it.
We'll just have them look at it.
All right, I can do that.
Anything else?
Peter, any negative impacts to the neighbors, to the zone plan, zoning ordinance by this application?
No, I don't see any.
Do you see positive impact from this? Oh, we want to talk about landscaping a little bit. Well, when we talked about Roger's, we actually, I'd like to represent, Mr. Chairman, to the board, that we've read Mr. McLaren's report, we accept all the conditions. There was one we'd like to visit, which is the number of shrubs, because this is a very narrow property with the small, if you see the pictures, there's really a small landscaped area out front, and if we could just soften the requirement a little bit. Peter, how many shrubs are actually out there now? I know there's credit for what exists.
We'll give you credit for whatever's there, yes.
I counted six currently. I think we wanted to propose 18 total. And the only, you know, there's not much space in the front of the house, so the only place we can really add stuff is in this area along the driveway. That's the only area where there's any grass we can remove and put in shrubs.
And the street trees in a grass strip, you agreed to that?
Yes.
Yes. That's one of the conditions in Mr. McLaren's report.
Right.
No problem with that. So purposes of zoning, we have to show for the C variance. We advance purposes of zoning. You think this application advances any purposes under the miserable land use law?
Yeah.
Tell the board what you think.
Well, mostly aesthetics. I mean, it's, you know, it's an improvement over what's there, it's going to create an enjoyable rear yard, and I see no negative impacts on the neighbors.
And any detriment to the zone plan, zoning ordinance to the city of Margate if this were, if these variances were granted?
No.
With that, Mr. Chairman, with that request for that one additional variance, we would be asking them for the three variances.
Right. Anything else on the board? Does anyone here from the public that would like to comment?
We're very happy.
Anyone other than Sorensen would like to comment?
All right, I'll sit down. Lynn Sorensen, I'm at 24 North Aracoi. I'm here on behalf of the Bex.
You swear, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
We're all supporting this improvement, and they're really nice people, and we would love for them to get this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any one of Figlios out there that would like to speak?
I'm very thrilled. They're very...
You've got to get sworn in first.
Okay.
State your name and address.
Lilian Bonfilio Marchiani, 22 North Aracoi.
You swear affirming testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
We're very happy, because they were going to move, and now they're going to stay, and they're just really great people, and if anything, we're thrilled.
You're going to take meatballs over there for...
I'll make the meatballs, we'll all go have a cocktail, what else could we ask for?
All right. Thank you.
I'm very happy.
Anyone else in the public? Public portion is closed. Without any further comments on the board, would you read the motion, please?
Do we determine the size? Is it 11 by 18?
Yes. Yeah.
That's what's proposed. Here's the regulation on that. May be erected to a height of eight feet, provided that the trowel's width does not exceed eight feet, and there are no more than two trowels per property, and the trowel is no less than 80% open. The maximum total length of all decorative trowels shall be 16 feet.
That's a lot of variances.
No, we're saying it's larger than what's allowed. Right. If we made it 16 instead of 18, it wouldn't touch the house. It would be silly not to ask for the two feet and the height.
11 by 18 and 11 feet high, basically.
Yes.
Didn't, didn't you say it was 14 feet in one? Is that in lieu of 18 or in lieu of the 11?
Okay, so this dotted line here is a second floor overhang of the house, so the distance from that point to the garage is 11 feet. When you go behind the house, there's a distance of, I think it was about five feet. You know, it comes out the same depth as this overhang. So it adds a couple of feet across the back, so it's basically 14 feet at the rear yard, if you, or the rear property line, if you will. Then as it come forward, it hits the house, and it'll get to be smaller, so...
But it goes 18. So it's 14 by 18.
Yes. Overall.
Got it.
As depicted on the plan that we marked as A1, we'll say, but, so someone needs to make a motion for C variance relief for the filing, the size of the accessory structure of 187 square feet, where 80 square feet permitted, the site, height of an accessory structure of 13.8 feet, where nine feet is permitted, and to permit a larger...
Eight, oh, yeah.
A larger than permitted pergola of approximately 14 by 18 feet, and as more particularly described on Mr. Weiss's plan that we marked as exhibit A1.
I'll make that motion in a second.
And the shrubs?
There was a couple, and then, and there was a couple, I was going to include that as a waiver, the shrubs.
We didn't finish the...
That's a waiver.
I was going...
It's the remaining condition.
Yeah, I was going to make that a waiver. The waivers would be, you didn't submit the area map of all properties, 200 feet, and then a design waiver, I guess, from the shrubs, 24 required, 18 permitted, or 18 are proposed, and then any other conditions set forth in Mr. McLaren's report.
Thank you.
Motion again.
I'll make the motion.
Tom?
My second.
Jim's second.
Tom Collins?
Easy case, very de minimis. I think it'll actually improve the neighborhood, because everybody's going to get together and have drinks and meatballs. But you guys got invited. I approve.
Clem Oslaski?
I don't have a problem with it from a planning or zoning standpoint, and I'm going to have to depend on Jimmy, because I do have the fire concerns. Other than that, I vote yes.
Rich Patterson?
I vote yes for the same reasons.
Mike Cristaldi?
I see absolutely no problem with it, any problem with the neighbors or anything, so I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
Clem, I'll keep you in mind as I do those inspections, I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nalti?
It's a nice addition, and there are no negative impacts, and it's a great neighborhood, and enjoy, I approve the application.
Mike Richmond?
I don't see any negative impact to the neighborhood, I'm going to vote yes.
Application passes, seven to nothing.
Thank you very much, Chairman, members of the board, thank you.
You had me at meatballs.
Joel, will you please come sign?
Yes, good luck, Jeff.
Next case, AJ and J Associates, One LLC, 107 South Osborne Avenue, block 15, lot three, in the S-40 district, to grant a D variance for relief for an accessory structure without a principal structure. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
Before we get, before we get started, is it use variance involved? D variance, so Mr. Collins, Mr. Gallantino will be recusing yourself, themselves.
How many votes?
And this is a five out of a seven vote situation for, for a use variance.
All right, Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. My report is based on the AJ and J Associates LLC, 107 South Osborne Avenue, within the S-40 zoning district. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a swimming pool on a lot that will not have a principal structure. The house has been torn down, and the existing detached garage is to remain. The use variance will permit the swimming pool to be constructed and a detached garage to remain. An outdoor kitchen is also being proposed and appears to be less than 80 square feet. This accessory use would be contingent on a use variance being granted. If the lots were to be consolidated, then these would be permitted used. However, the number of accessory structures would likely trigger variance, but not at this time. Is the understanding of this office that the lots cannot be consolidated at this time due to a trust ownership with a finite life issue? Again, the applicant can discuss that. So in a nutshell, variances require use, whereas an accessory structure, pool and attached garage exists without a principal structure, and one is proposed, and, what the hell am Number of accessory structures, where two is a maximum, three are proposed. That concludes my report.
Can I get, Roger?
Yes.
So is, is the pool considered an accessory structure?
It isn't.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You have an existing garage, well, you have an existing garage, and they're counting the outdoor kitchen, which is as a additional accessory structure, even though it's kind of attached. It's a barbecue with some buildings. It's right on the edge of the...
Right here.
Correct.
It's going to have a booth.
No, it's just a masonry wall with a counter with a grill.
Until you're sworn in.
Well, you present your case, and then we'll ask questions.
Sure, sure. May it please the board, Jack Factor appearing for the applicant, AJ and J Associates. Essentially, essentially, when you look at this from a use basis, what happened here was that the Herskewitzes bought a house, they built a brand-new house a few years ago, very nice house on the adjacent lot. Then they built, then they bought the existing house, that was an older house on 107, and they actually tore it down. And essentially, what they're doing is they're creating, they're ultimately creating one, you know, two conforming lots, but they're really using it as one. The reason why we need a variance is because when the Herskewitzes bought it, they individually, well, Jeff is the owner of 105 South Osborne Avenue, and AJ and J Associates, which actually is an LLC, the members of the LLC are their children, but they have a mortgage on it. So we can't, if we could consolidate the lots, we wouldn't need to ask for any variance, but since we can't, we're here to ask for a variance. It's going to be used as one individual lot. So really, what you have is a really lovely house that the Herskewitzes built, as you can see from Mr. Fenwick, who will swear and admit, the legendary architect, that he's designed a very nice pool and outdoor space for them, and you're going to have an 8,000-square-foot development, which actually is, creates more open space in the community, but we do need, I think these are kind of technical variances, to be honest with you, and we are willing to agree on a condition that should he ever sell it to another party, they have to remove the pool and put a principal structure on the lot, which is a condition of Mr. McLaren's report. So if we could just swear Mr. Fenwick in in this case, if there's any questions, we can go forward.
Sure. Mr. Fenwick, swear affirming testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen Fenwick. I have offices in Lynwood, New Jersey. I'm a licensed planner and architect in the state of New Jersey.
And I'd offer him as an expert, he's been...
Yes, we accept his qualifications.
Just if you would, because we want to be pretty brief here, we just handed out a plan, would you, that was just to really update what you had done, correct? Would you describe really briefly what those changes are from the original plan to this plan?
There were, there were some changes to the location of the hot tub area of the pool and the perimeter of the patio area of the pool, but the criteria listed in the zoning chart accompanying hasn't changed.
So we need all the bulk requirements for pool, correct?
Yes.
And the, you also show on the blue plan, which the fence that's there now, that six-foot fence, that's an existing fence. That was there before, correct?
Yes, the fence on the side in the back, yes.
And the garage is existing as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and so in your opinion, this meets all the bulk requirements? And as far as the reasons for the D-variants, if, as I said in my opening, if they own the property as one and were able to consolidate it, they wouldn't need any variance, is correct?
Well, too many accessory structures.
Oh, we would need it for the, because of the outdoor.
Yeah, right.
We would need that one there.
Yeah, we should maybe leave that to the last, but yeah, not, not only does it conform, but it exceeds the, the requirements for landscaping, vegetative cover, et cetera.
Is the, is the driveway staying?
Yes, they use it for off-street parking.
Okay.
Which is actually a benefit.
Yeah. So then the fence would be between the driveway and the pool?
Yeah, there's two fences. There's one along the right side of the driveway going in.
Okay.
At the property line, and then there's one separating the pool from the public area, as is required.
And you looked at the conditions in Mr. McLaren's report, correct?
Yes, yes, I think, we're fine with them. The only question we have is the third accessory use, the outdoor kitchen. Maybe that was a grandiose term for really what's a barbecue with a masonry wall and a, and a counter to, to cook and put things on. It's not really a kitchen. It's just a.
Right, and the board in the past has required a accessory structure variance for that.
Okay.
Number of.
But typically, when you design for upper-scale homes, do they generally have these kinds of?
Yes, if they have the space for it, it's quite common, you know, it's a desirable amenity. It's just, instead of just having a wheel-up grill, now you have a, you know, a solid structure that stays, and you, you have a place to put things while you're cooking. The grill is just integrated into that wall.
I just had a quick question.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I think it's beautiful. I love the idea of, you know, this was approved something similar on Huntington and I think it's Seaside there where they consolidated the lot.
Oh, yeah.
And it's beautiful, and this is gorgeous, and I understand that it's a family, and clearly it's gonna be for the family's use. But since the pool is going on the LLC lot.
Yes.
And I understand you said Mr. Herskowitz has agreed to build a principal structure on this lot. It's actually the children or the LLC would have to make that agreement, isn't it?
Well, and they will.
And they have agreed to those terms?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I understand it's a family, so it's technical, but I mean, they, we need to know that they're gonna do that.
Absolutely.
Jack, how high is that existing fence in the back that's to remain?
Six feet.
Six feet.
Yeah, I handed out a drawing with that information on it. It wasn't on the prior drawing that you received, Roger.
Maybe I can present this to you. Your, your planning.
There's an extra one right here, Dick. That's a couple.
What, what are you passing out, Mr.? I'll call this A1 plot plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's revised today.
Okay, plot plan revised.
Two twenty.
Two twenty-eight.
Any plans for the garage?
It's existing.
I know, fix up or, it's a flat roof, you got pool equipment in there. Stay like that, right? Just, that's the way it's staying?
Do you want to square me in or?
Yes.
Name and address, I'm sorry.
Jeffrey Herskowitz, 41 Galpling Hill Road, Cherry Hill, New Jersey.
And you swear, I'm sorry.
Part-time resident, 105 South Osborne and 107.
And you swear affirm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
According to my wife, that garage will be cleaned up and beautified. So yes.
Do you want to click you're gonna clean it up?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How are we accessing, there's a six-foot fence on, on the side of the existing residence. How are you accessing the pool?
There's no fence, it's, there's no fence in between the, there.
Oh, that's open. Okay, so that's open, okay, that was my question.
The fence borders around the property.
Okay.
And that existing driveway is coming up and will be, uh, placed down.
This isn't a driveway on this side?
There is, but that's coming out.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be sod.
That's what I thought.
It's coming out?
Yeah. The driveway on the existing house at 105.
Where's your off-street parking gonna be?
No, it's part, it's gonna be on the 107 lot where the existing driveway is. There are two driveways on the property after we bought the 107 property.
I change the things. So now you don't have parking, off-street parking on your principal use? So now you need a parking variance for this house?
Okay.
So the, the benefit of added parking goes away. Well, I raised the question because I saw the fence going over to the house, so I thought.
It creates greens, green space. Where's the fence?
Parking's a premium here, I, I.
No, we have the driveway. There, it holds four spots in the garage.
Well, it's a separate lot.
Well, okay, technically, it is.
It is, no, it is, right.
As soon as the mortgage can be paid off on 105, it'll be put under the AJ&amp;J trust.
Well, we're concerned about today.
Okay.
It's a problem.
This is a problem. Yeah, that was never in the test.
I didn't know that, I apologize. I did not know that.
Yeah.
It wasn't advertised.
Wasn't advertised?
It was, and any all additional, okay.
Yeah, but. That variance is for a different lot. Yeah, it's a, it's a different lot. Jack, I, Jack, I think you need to come back.
I agree. If we wanted to remove that, we would have to.
Yeah. Or, you just say it stays?
It stays.
Yeah, it's gonna stay.
Thank you, sir.
But what are you gonna do about the fence?
There's no fence there.
Well, you're gonna put one there when you, when you have the pool.
No, we're gonna put a fence across the front.
You just told me the fence was gonna go across the front and across that driveway because it wouldn't exist anymore. So you can't have.
No.
No, the other side. No, the other side, that driveway, yes. Yeah. And that's blocking the driveway. My, my suggestion would be, yes. That fence stays on this property in question.
There is no fence there now. Oh, yeah.
You have to have a fence around the.
You have to have a fence around the. Okay.
So, so we'll put it.
Have a gate from lot one, lot two to lot three towards the back.
Okay.
That problem goes away.
Got it.
So you have to have a fence on the other side of that driveway.
Correct.
Right, which is not a bad thing.
No.
And then when you consolidate the lots, you can come back and see what you want to do. I mean, that's, but that's a different issue. But this is a whole separate lot. We can't look at that lot separately, so.
You're just gonna put a gate here for the cars to come in.
You can't do that for a pool, you can't do that with, around a pool. Have a car for, a gate for a pool? You can't put a gate, a car gate in, around a pool to open it. I said.
The code is four foot, we're five foot with ours, but who's to say if the ones pinned that it's not a fence?
I don't know what you're saying.
The, the code addresses the ability, essentially, of a child to reach over and open the lock to the gate. And this gate that we're proposing for an automobile would have similar safeguards to it. The child couldn't open it.
Well, I need your opinion on that. In the ordinance.
Oh, it would be an electronic gate.
So you want a gate across the driveway at lot two? Yes.
Can I do it by hand?
They need a variance for that.
Okay, we'll do it by hand, but then you'd have the, the high lifter and.
Gates across driveways are only permitted in the multifamily zone. What?
What's, what's on this plan?
Five or six. Mr. Plaeter, I, I think the only thing that you're gonna get tonight is if you have a fence going up the other side of that driveway with a gate at the back to go in there.
We'll come back to this variance, so we're gonna do this and come back to this.
Yeah, yeah, with allowable parking here, right?
No, no, you need variance for that.
That's fine, that's fine. We'll put a fence down the property line.
We'll put a fence down the property line.
You, like I said, you, you have the chance of alleviating this problem when you combine the lots.
Correct, correct.
But they're not ready to do that. No, they're not. I'm saying, if you take that now, that's something that you could address later.
We're gonna put a fence in.
I can see why you want what you want, and you may get that when you combine the lots. Yeah, we have to look, lot three is lot three.
All right, so we're not addressing that one right now. Okay, fine, I got it.
Right.
Yeah.
And we'll put a gate here to get into the pool.
Then you comply.
Roger, can that?
We need to see what he just drew.
Um, can that, just call it the property line fence, can that one be as low as four feet?
No.
So five or six.
It's five's the minimum, six's max with water, okay.
It's open, it's see-through, it's.
Right, we were, what we're proposing is down the property line of that lot.
Yes.
Eighty-foot distance of fence. It'd be a minimum of five feet back, exactly.
You could.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I drew.
Did you have this going this way, or did you have it coming over here?
Well, they can do either or, as long as they don't eat anything from us to do that.
You could cut across at the end of the, before those steps at the end of the driveway, you still have your required parking there, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So your back, so your backyard could walk right over into that yard.
Exactly.
This, these are fence around all the way.
This wouldn't count? After this lot.
Well, no, if you close, they're saying if you close it back to here.
Oh, yeah, that you could do.
You, you know, that you have this fence, and there's also a fence all around the back.
I think, I think the bottom line is we're gonna comply with the fence ordinance, and we'll just deal with Mr. McLaren.
That's what I was gonna say. You do, you're drawing, he's drawing, you.
Right, right.
If we vote on this, it will be contingent on his approval of meeting the ordinance, yes.
Okay.
So that driveway was not removed yet, right?
No.
Okay.
But it'll work along there. Yeah, to, to bring in, to clean up, but it'll be replaced.
So it.
It'll be replaced.
It has been removed, it'll be replaced. That it's a condition of approval, then?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
This was supposed to be simple.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, nothing simple.
Okay.
You can represent, you have the authority to speak for 105 South, even though it's, it's in.
Well, 105 South is here.
No, it's LLC.
107 is LLC.
107, 105 is Jeff Herskowitz.
Okay.
105 is here, right.
That's Jeff Herskowitz.
So Jack speaks for 107, 105 speaks for himself.
Okay, got you.
Permits without the issue to that driveway is replaced.
Could be replaced with a grass driveway?
No. No, we have, we have new requirements for, you could do strips, but they have to be so wide.
Yeah, okay.
You'll meet the requirements for the new driveway.
Sure.
It can have grass in it.
Does he have to go as far back as it shows, or does he only need two spaces?
How many bedrooms are in 105?
Three, four.
You need two spaces, right. Do you have 36 feet?
Yeah, 36.
Yeah, you're fine. So just as far, 36 feet back you'll need, from the property line, not the, not the sidewalk, the property line.
Or make it 50 for your limo.
That would be Jack's.
He has his own house, doesn't he? Somewhere on. I think things need to be reworded to make everything clear and final. Who are we waiting to speak?
Well, I, I don't think anyone, but I think one of the things. One, one of the things, obviously, we just want to make sure, we obviously understand the intent. We want to make sure we don't have a standalone pool lot, and I think the conditions, as we kind of alluded to, 107 can't be sold without 105 unless they fill in the pool on 107. 107 can't be sold without 105 unless they fill in the, would go vice versa. 105, where the house is, can't be sold without.
You could sell them both together.
You can sell them both together. You can't sell one without the other unless you fill in the pool, and I think.
Remove.
We, remove the pool, and I think the other rental restriction, I mean, in theory, they rent out their house, and they can still use the pool.
Sure.
So.
I don't think any rental restrictions. You just can't use, I think the idea is you can't use them separately.
Right. My, my point being, if you rent your house out.
You gotta rent the pool house.
You gotta rent the pool.
It has to be treated as one property.
Correct.
And, and I understand the intent, and it's just.
Just so we're further clear on the record, upon merging the two lots, we get rid of the requirement for the driveway.
No, you would have to come back.
Between, no, that's incorrect. Between the two properties, between, we already have an existing driveway on the 107 lot.
Lot three becomes part of lot two, you comply with parking.
Yes, yes, you should be okay.
Yes.
I mean.
I'm sorry, I was wrong, that's right.
The concept is to get rid of the concrete, to have more green space. So yes.
And don't those restrictions have to carry to any, like, future owners in the event that they were sold together? Like you're saying, you can't sell one without the other, and we're placing restrictions on these homeowners.
Right.
But wouldn't there have to be something?
Well, the conditions run with the land.
Yeah.
It's fine.
I know somebody who did that, so I know it works.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Unless the board requires it, I don't think we need to go as far as a deed restriction, as long as we clearly spell out the conditions in the resolution, which I'll take the first stab at, and I'll send it to Mr. Plaeter, and we'll, we'll give some acceptable language.
Okay. So is there anything, do you know how you'll, you have it now, how you'll phrase it? Sure. Phrase it? Okay, anything else from you, Mr. Plaeter?
I know, that's all, thank you.
Anything else on the board? So, anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Any human beings here from the public that would like to speak? Public portion is closed without no further, if there's no further discussion, would you read the motion, please?
It's a use variance, so when you're five out of seven votes, and it's a use variance to permit the accessory structures on their own standalone lot, lot, those being the pool, the kitchen, and the garage. And the conditions that we're gonna attach, which I'll work into the resolution, and I'll work with Mr. Plaeter and Roger to get them exactly how we need them, is that if the subject lot, which is 107 South, is, is sold or leased, it can't, it can't be sold or leased without also selling 105, and 105 South can't be sold or leased or rented without selling 107. The fence on lot three, lot one, which is 107, the one we're talking about, will be around the pool and will stay, stay on the property line, and it'll be compliant and should be approved by Mr. McLaren. And then the applicant will replace the driveway on neighboring lot 105 South with a compliant driveway to accommodate the required number of parking spaces.
Two parking spaces, two off-street parking spaces for lot two.
Lot two.
Based on four bedrooms.
And then the other conditions set forth in Mr. McLaren's report of February 26, 2019, applicant will comply with all representations it made during the course of the year.
So I just, clarification, there are four bedrooms or five bedrooms on?
Four.
Okay.
Someone needs to make that motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Clem Waszleski?
I think it's gonna be very nice to have this open space along that street. So little of that happening, it's mostly in the reverse. I vote to approve.
Rich Patterson?
I did the exact same thing. It was the best thing I ever did. I got rid of my parking lot. I didn't tell anybody. I understand your intent. I understand you want the green space. That will come with time. I, I, I fully approve. I don't, I see so much benefit to the neighborhood with open light and space and not having another house stuck in there. I, I approve the application. I see no detriment.
Mike Cristaldi?
I see absolutely no negative from this, all positive. I think it's a great idea. I wish I'd saw more of that going on in town. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nalti?
I vote in favor of the application for the same reasons.
Craig Pomisano?
I also approve the project.
Despina Hess?
I vote in favor of the application. You satisfied the requirements for use variance. You, I see nothing but positives, desirable visual environment. You're creating all this open space. It's gonna be beautiful.
Thank you.
Mike Richmond?
I think it's gonna be a nice improvement to the neighborhood, mimic the rest, neighborhood trends, huh?
Application passes seven to nothing. Jack, will you please come sign?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have a business to discuss. Tom?
Can't block a driveway.
Yeah, because people keep it shut, and they won't use a driveway.
Gate never opens.
All right, real quick, I just want to revise the definition of the building coverage. Right now, the, the ordinance says a ratio of horizontal area of all principal buildings measured.
Right now, the, the ordinance says, a ratio of horizontal area of all principal buildings measured from the exterior surface of the exterior walls of the ground floor on a lot to the total area, which kinda implies that the second floor can be larger...
You listening, Mr. Pomisano?
And not in line with the floor below it, and still comply, even though, in my opinion, that's not the intent of the ordinance. Right. Right. Yeah.
I need to have this recorded.
Right now, the ordinance says...
One at a time, please.
As long as the second floor does not exceed the allowable floor or building coverage. But as my schedule... Right. So I, I, the proposed definition is below, where I said, that percentage of a lot covered by the principal building, all projections attached to the principal building covered by a permanent roof other than decks and porches shall be considered part and parcel of said principal building. I'd like to revise that and just, like a fireplace or a bay, a bay window or something like that, an architectural projection not be included in building coverage. But this way, the way I look at building coverage, I'm at ten thousand, ten thousand feet up in the sky, I look down, the outline of the building. Anything below it, that's building coverage. Right.
And we've had it being pushed with cases over the past couple of years where we, and you really don't see it until it's built, and you see an overhang, the one over the garage.
This, this won't stop that.
It won't?
No, it'll help calm it down a little bit.
You know what does annoy me?
You look like Merv Griffin. Calm down! I would say they should not count as building coverage if they're not part of the, if they're just a projection from like one floor. What?
They built the fireplace out of the first fourteen levers, so they don't count as coverage.
Yeah, but it doesn't count.
I don't think it looks stupid.
We're not talking about that tonight, that's not, that's not part of the discussion, so...
Yes, it is.
Well, it isn't anymore, Michael. In my opinion, that's a permitted encroachment or permitted extension.
Yeah, but if you're five feet off the property line, and then you can come out another fifteen inches, sixteen inches for the fireplace, you're not longer five feet off the property line.
And again, that's a permitted encroachment, as per the ordinance.
Now it is, it is, it is, yes.
No, he doesn't. He's not...
Or should it say something in this definition, to matter of fact?
Yes, I said I was gonna revise that to make sure that, that's all right.
You think it should count?
Well, we're changing it to make it count.
No, and, and what you're gonna, if you eliminate that... But that's a setback issue. But we allow projections, and the reason why we should continue to allow projections on corner lots, we don't have one big wall.
No, we allow it on all lots, we allow it on my house, yeah.
But that area below it does not count as vegetative coverage, does not count as landscaping coverage.
So aren't we gonna get in trouble, like if you have a house that's three feet off, and they wanna put a fireplace in it?
There are a lot of objection up to fifteen inches, I believe.
You're down to fifteen inches on side yard.
How's that?
You're not allowed, you're not even allowed to have a three-foot setback, so...
Well, I think they'd have a problem getting it...
It would have to be totally fire-rated, I, I just think you're, I, I, that's your opinion. My, my opinion is that we should allow projections.
Well, we do allow projections, I think we need to leave that part of it alone. We're talking about the, the roof coming down.
Right, looking down from the sky, whatever that outline is, first, second, third floor...
And even not...
That's building coverage.
Mike, even not corner lots, you look... No.
No.
No, no, that's, he's exaggerating with his ten-thousand-foot stuff.
Yeah, I meant thirty thousand.
Even on, you know, corner lots, it's important, but even on lots that aren't important, I know the house across the street from, I think Peter White designed it, it's awful. But you have these flat walls, to, to have these projections, it liven's up the house, it liven's up the neighborhood, it's... No, I'm saying not on corner lots, on that, on the middle of the block. I'm saying forget the corner lots. Even other, my house, the house I used to have on Lancaster Avenue, we had a window, we had the fireplace project a little bit, it was no big deal, they had a little peaked roof over it, it just gives some character to the house. It, it's not extensive coverage. Yeah, but we're, this exists, let's not change what exists.
One other issue that is, say you have a, you're in a coastal A zone, or you're not in a coastal A zone, but your, your ground floor, you want parking underneath, you don't enclose the parking, but you have storage, it's say, three hundred square feet. By definition, that's your building coverage, even though the building above it's a thousand square feet, the storage space, your building coverage is three hundred square feet, that's not accurate.
But that's not the first floor, is it?
It says exterior surface of the ground floor.
Oh, the existing?
Right.
Oh, but you're correcting that.
I'm correcting.
Okay, yeah, got it.
So enclosed or not enclosed, you're saying enclosed?
It's gonna be the principal structure. If your second floor wall's out here, your first floor wall's out here, it's the furthest one out.
Yeah. You're talking cantilever, that's, that's the main...
Is there some restriction as to how close that projection can come to the property line?
It has to meet setbacks.
If the principal building meets the setbacks, that's why you limit the...
Projection doesn't have to meet...
It exists, Clem, we're not talking about that. Those things exist now, we're not changing anything on them. They're staying the same, we're not talking about changing any of that, we're talking about the cantilevered portion. The other is staying the same, we're not doing anything about that tonight. So whatever the existing law is on them, is still there.
I'm just clarifying a definition, just... And one other thing I wanna talk about is detached garages, or actually, any garage, in, the minimum size and interior space has to be the size of a parking space.
Yes, I disagree. It's too small. It's too small.
But the problem is, they're, they're coming in smaller.
Smaller than what?
You gotta be able to open the door.
Nine by eighteen. Yeah, nine by eighteen is an outdoor parking space, it's gotta be bigger than that, although... Nine by eighteen is a required parking space size. So it can't be smaller than that.
Twelve by twenty, so your car, your door closes and your doors open.
If you can't get out of the car, you're not using it.
What, twelve by twenty is...
But the, well, here's the issue, I mean, the driveways now are nine feet wide on the side of the house, with fence on one side and a wall on the other side, so that argument...
I thought we did go to ten.
Ten's the minimum driveway width at the curb.
No, I thought we had one...
Have to be offset one foot from the property line.
From the fence, from the fence to the house, we want ten feet.
Don't we want ten feet?
I thought we changed this.
I want twelve feet, but I, whatever, that's not, we did or we didn't, that's not the issue here, but the, the work on that was circulated around, but...
So what Clem just said is correct, if we said the minimum would be eleven feet interior by twenty, then you could get the car ran in and open the doors. Well, I don't, you know, I, I... I get the width, a little, I get the width, but the length, why not just keep it at eighteen feet? It's not what we're, the issue is, I mean, you're not gonna, you know, you...
You don't get, you don't climb out the window.
Right, exactly. So why, you know, keep it at eighteen... I couldn't fit my car in an eighteen by...
But nobody has a car like that.
So if somebody has a pickup truck, so you can't say, so twenty is not it. I, 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 I don't agree. I, keep it at eighteen, if you wanna make it a little wider, I get that, you know, maybe, but I don't agree, I think we should keep it at eighteen.
But I, I, I like the width, what did, what did you propose?
That's my opinion.
I didn't propose anything, alls I said is a minimum width is nine by eighteen, but I have some people, inside. People coming in with a ten by twenty garage, exterior dimensions with eight-inch block or ten-inch block on either side.
Well, if you can't, well, then it's not providing a parking spot in there, so can...
That's what he's saying?
Yeah, so...
Nonusable, nonusable.
But can we change that and make it eleven foot?
We can make it whatever you want.
I think eleven foot is a minimum inside the garage.
Eleven, eleven foot's good, but I agree with Tom, it's too, too small.
I get the car in, you gotta get the door down.
I agree with that, but then I open the trunk.
You gotta go to twenty. I say twenty-two, but I think I don't know.
Well, then you're over two hundred and fifty square feet.
You could do twenty-two, because the, the ordinance says it has to be no more than twenty-six feet from the rear property line to the face. So you have one foot, you have twenty, it could be twenty-five feet, still comply with the ordinance.
Make it thirteen or twenty-five then?
No.
Well, I don't think you wanna make it twenty-five, I mean, we, we need a minimum.
What, what, what problems is this gonna cause?
Well, the five-foot distant, or three-foot...
Three-foot distance.
It's gonna push a house, you know, two feet closer to the other house, which is not a bad thing.
I, I agree.
I'll draft something up and I'll...
What, what, what are we doing now?
Twenty-five by fourteen garage is minimum.
Are you serious?
And thirty feet high with a fireplace.
And a cantilever.
Yes.
What's the inside measure? Eleven by twenty.
How big's a block? So sixteen inches, so you got another foot.
Garages, like, the garages, where's Jimmy? Garages are, you know, still framed, they're, they're not blocked.
You can use two by four.
Yeah, you use two by four. Normally you come out...
Don't you block up this high? Is it framed to the ground?
It can be, it can, it can be framed to the ground. Just FYI, before Jimmy left, I asked him, we were in the back about this, and he agreed a hundred percent, it should be at least eleven by twenty.
He's not here to be cross-examined, so...
You know, and I'm okay with that, as long as you can do, as you can fill the frame, to, to a two by four wall.
It's gotta be treated lumber if it's below that.
Huh?
It's gotta be treated lumber below.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's, that, but that's, that has nothing to do with that, yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
But then again, I mean, if, if you have two by four walls good that it's lap versus an eight-inch block, if you have to block, the interior size of the block has to comply.
Right.
If you don't, right.
Inside is inside.
Minimum clear space.
Inside, floor space.
So what's the minimum clear space again?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven by twenty.
I like it, eleven by twenty on the floor.
We're, yeah, well, yeah, and we're gonna get a lot of pushback from builders, and...
Not from me.
I don't consider you a builder.
Well, I failed a couple of applications because inside of the garage, they're counting as a parking space, I said it's not a parking space, it's not a garage.
I guess we have to take public comment.
You know, whatever, I don't care. I'll pick my models.
Well, nobody's gonna use it anyway, but that's not up to us.
That's a bigger bar.
We can make them, you can make them try to be...
Oh, you can't. Anyone from the public like to comment?
Oh, yeah, no.
Please be sworn in.
Just thinking, if you make the garages too big, you're not gonna see anymore, so if you're trying to like discourage garages, then you, you know, that's...
See them underneath.
That's gonna accomplish, no, that, that's gonna accomplish that, you know, I think ten foot inside is plenty, myself, I mean, most cars are only about six and a half feet wide, so, and nobody, and people aren't driving in and getting out both sides, you know, so, you know, if you got six and a half, you have a little clearance on that side, it gives you three foot on the other side, I think that's plenty. The depth, you know, if you wanna add a little bit, but, you know, once at some point the garages get so big that nobody's gonna do them, which, you know, might be kind of like, you know...
Then a bark underneath, give us more air and open space, that's good.
That'll drive it in that direction, yeah, that's what you're shooting for.
Yeah, you gain air, open space on the sides of the house, but you lose it up top, and the sun come up top. The neighbors behind and to the side, exactly, yeah.
So we're making the inside ten foot or eleven?
I think eleven is too much, but I don't know, 'cause...
I do too, I think it should be ten.
How about ten eight, and I'll give you two eight-inch blocks, twelve foot outside.
Look, the, the minimum space to be counted as a parking space is nine by eighteen, so...
In Longport, they make the inside of the garage be ten by twenty. Yes. And the, the parking space outside is nine by eighteen.
I think ten by twenty is adequate.
I like ten by twenty.
And it's nice to be consistent with the neighboring town.
I agree with Roger.
Ten by twenty?
Yeah.
Can I, can I get a...
We don't know if he's telling the truth or not.
Unless you park the car sideways, and then we're all screwed.
What's Ben, his name is Marty?
All right, so what's, that's our final decision.
The problems are coming in smaller.
All right, all in favor of ten by twenty, all in favor of eleven by twenty, raise your hand.
Ten by, ten eight.
Concrete block. But I've seen them, they're oversized sheds, the, the things that are going there.
Well, you make the minimum size ten by twenty, if the, if the contractor's smart, he's, he's not gonna wanna cut out a block, or make it a little bit bigger, and you could also go bigger.
Well, I did, I pushed that whole side out, I made it a whole different garage, I could fit two cars and all my motorcycles in there, yeah. Right.
All right, so we're ten by twenty inside, good.
So Roger's gonna draw something up with that, and then you, so the new business is closed. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.